So that there is like a line that you can like, I mean, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
Yeah, no, it was kind of exciting. I was with my kids like now. Cousin, I see that has a very exciting memory in Ireland.
Thank you. February 11th, right? Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order a meeting of the Hastings and Hudson Board of Education for February 11th, 2025. Our only meeting of the month of February. Welcome, everybody. We're going to start off this evening with a presentation on the work and on the flooding for the FMS facility. Documents up on the board, right? Who's going to take this?
So we're going to be in a run of three quite major presentations to start the meeting. We do need to adjust policy, though. We're going to move policy later, so I think the board has to vote on that since it's in this listed agenda. So you might want to do that first, Alex.
So we were, there was a policy related to the New York State regulation about school board liaisons for students. We were going to examine it with our students here, but they're both actually sick this evening, so neither could make it. So we're going to move that policy lower in the proceedings tonight. So is there a motion to move policy, that policy reading lower in the agenda this evening?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
So we're going to ask the board to bear with us as we work through three highly interrelated but still distinct presentations. They are now posted in the public record, and we want to start with the most immediate, and that's FMS. Then we'll go into the bond, and then we'll go into the budget. And before each of those, I'll say a few brief remarks, but others will carry the effort. So first now is the facilities update.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to say something. So each board meeting, we've just provided us a very short update on the progress that we're making in the Farragut wing with the flood, and we did meet today as a day we typically meet, we meet every Tuesday, and just to kind of provide some quick updates on where the work is and, you know, what has been accomplished since the last time we met. So the demolition of the upper two floors is now complete, and they are now working on the lower floor of the building, the ceiling, and in most places, this would be a pretty easy demolition, but because there's so much plaster and cement up in the ceiling, they're actually just, to do one room can take a number of hours. So they do anticipate that lower floor, and because there's other, there's wires and other things in there, they have to, they had to remove a lot of the mechanical and electrical to be able to do that work. So there's also, it's pretty time-consuming on that lower floor. So the schedule of that work, we anticipate will be completed by next week. We did require additional environmental testing because as they remove some of the materials and you get above the materials that we've been able to test, sometimes you find other conditions. So in between, sometimes that may take a day or two to have people come in and perform tests in particular areas. District engineers will be visiting again the site tomorrow as we continue to like things that either need to, they need some direction, or the restoration company and the contractors need some direction on some of the work that, you know, the type of sheetrock and all the rest that'll be put back in. So I think we're making good progress, and they've been kind of coordinating that well. We are recommending, based on the age of the sprinkler system that exists in the Farragut, and we have an opportunity, as everything is now gutted out, to, you know, upgrade systems that are either end-of-life or antiquated beyond useful life. So currently, we have an engineer working on the design for a sprinkler system upgrade. The PA system was also being evaluated by the insurance adjuster. The district, that is one of the items that we've been contemplating doing an overhaul on. And we did it at the high school end of the building, so they have a fully integrated system, and we are, the PA system did take some water, and like as, there's different times in which we have to let things dry out and then have it tested to see where, what will happen there. But we are hope, we're hoping to get away from that system because it's not fully integrated with the high school wing. So, you know, we'll come back with a recommendation, whatever the results are of that testing. And again, the architects are continuing to evaluate some of the layouts on the lower floors to see if there's any opportunities to make some different designs, to see if it'll function better for the middle school. Again, we're continuing to evaluate the work that's occurring to see what, if, could be accomplished or changed now to, as we look at the other improvements, we're looking to make in the Farragut complex. And then one of the things, and we'll get to it when we discuss the bond, which is our next presentation, we were, in fact, able to remove some of the items from the bond that were related to work that would have been done here. We mentioned it last week, but it's closer to about $2 million worth of improvements that now will be picked up under this flood and will be now removed from the bond scope. And so that is it. They're making good progress, and since the incident occurred, there's not been a day in which we don't have a full crew of people working, and they do work six days a week. So we're pretty happy with the progress they're making. And I, next time, I promise pictures because today, now that they're above the ceilings on the third floor, you can see the original architecture of the building, and it's like a fully vaulted ceiling, and it must have been exposed. And now we're kind of going back, and it's pretty interesting. We're like, oh, this is where the, it's on the fifth grade corridor, like where we believe the exist, the first library was, and in different areas, we're kind of matching it up to older plans. So, but I think the, it's quite beautiful when you're in it now with all the exposed brick, so we'll bring some pictures.
Let me just say a few overarching points that aren't here. As I, I communicate a lot with fellow superintendents, as I should, especially now, given what's happening around the nation and more locally. But as I share with our, my fellow superintendents, that one-third of our district, one-third of our district in two weeks had to be relocated to functional educational space, they are amazed at the quality of the teamwork here. And so I have to thank the staff, the principals. I have to thank, I'm going to leave names out because once I mention names, someone goes, "You didn't mention me." But it's, everybody has stepped up, and we are shoehorned in everywhere else. We are shoehorned in everywhere else. So here's that next big thank you. Thank you to our students, many of whom are here tonight. Thank you to our families, and thank you to staff for being patient, because we have teachers doubling up in rooms. We have teachers taking over the media centers. They have to. This is a great place to meet, but we're not meeting in the blue, you know, lecture room because that's now a classroom for two classes. So we are shoehorned in. The patience is holding, and the patience does need to hold because we're going to do this right. We're going to bring it back right. We're going to bring it back at a very cost-effective level for the residents of Hastings. But that means that this is the way we are till the end of the school year. We will not be back in that space for educational reasons until this summer, because again, we have to do this right. And when we get to the bond update, there is a financial opportunity in this crisis here. Final comment on this, we have to keep those classrooms the size they are because they're already below code, if you will, low requirements. We are looking at some modifications on that first floor, excuse me, the basement floor, the garden level, as might be said. But otherwise, we're going to come back with upgraded versions of what were there. And I'm not going to name the teacher, but the teachers come to me a lot, and a few of them are saying, "Nobody wanted this, but now our floors won't be cracked. They won't have bumps. We won't have old things that needed attention." So we will bring it back in quality and in a good way. But here's the key. Thank you to everyone around Hastings, especially our staff within the buildings for being so patient, because when one-third move in two weeks to still keep the teaching and learning going is nothing short of remarkable.
Yeah, well said. Well said. I'm going to open up for questions or comments from what Maureen presented.
I had a question. It was under business items, so I'm just wondering, the designing of the lighting related to the existing flood work? It was in the business items, but I guess.
Yeah, all of that, just to be clear, and I should have put a memo. Any of professional services that are related to the claim will be covered or we submit it to the insurance because the, if it's real, I mean, because just in terms of, they need to be specced and drew because it's a fully gutted system, and anything, because we're a New York State school, has to be, you know, ensured that everything's up to code and correctly documented because we would still file some people with the state after if there were any upgrades that were beyond the insurance.
Okay, so we pay and then they pay us back?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, got you. Is this on?
It's on.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so anything, there's things such as the contractor that has been brought in by the insurance company, that they're paying them directly, but there's costs, like if we were to need to replace some pieces of equipment, some of our desktops were broken, so we have a list in which we're keeping every, or any expenses that we're incurring, then will be reimbursed. And actually, the adjuster, when we come back from break, and I are meeting, just to kind of like submit, I'm going to submit what we've expensed thus far for like a reimbursement. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that I think it's important to give these updates at every meeting because I think it's really hard for people to comprehend the extent of the damage. I think it's certainly hard for me sometimes, but a lot of, I often have people asking me, I'm sure other people do too, like, "So is everything okay at school now?" And I think it, you know, you have to start to explain, and I don't think people can really imagine the extent of the damage and the process, and that when you say, "Oh, three to six months," they're like, surprised. But I think it's really, I appreciate getting updates on a regular basis.
I was going to say, I hardly believed it myself, but then when I was walking home from a basketball game and the lights were on in that space, and I could see that it was completely gutted, it was a powerful feeling. It stopped me in my tracks. So walk around the school at night, and you can really see the extent of the damage and what needs to be done. And also, like, really huge kudos to the teachers and the students all making it work because they are cramped into the library and all different spaces, but they're doing it, and they're learning, and we're moving forward.
Just a quick question. I know there was some, I don't know if we have an answer, but there was some question about if we'd be able to accommodate state testing onsite? Are we still thinking about that, or where are we?
So we're working through that. Right now, we don't have a great option, but we have an option. And so we're trying to get creative, but at the moment, it looks like eight half-day sessions for the middle school while we're doing test administration. And that's largely due to the fact that we need to ensure legal compliance with mandates around accommodations. And also, it's an untimed assessment, so students have to be able to have the whole length of the school day. So we, it's, we can't even run like an A session and a B session. So we're continuing to work through it. We're thinking about alternate space use, but at the same time, the elementary school is also testing concurrently. So we're working it through. At the moment, the least worst option is the half-days that I mentioned, and we're staying on top of it to see if we can do anything differently.
And we'll formally communicate that. I mean, it's good to have it come up in dialogue now, but we'll make sure we communicate that very clearly. That's a telling example of how shoehorned in we are, and also, we work within a context of state framework where computer-based testing, CBT, that new acronym, is the way we do things. And that, and on time, the accommodations matter immensely. So those are all these different vectors that we're working with here. And this may be, may be one of the toughest examples of a give, that we have to give that kind of time back just to get the, get those assessments done. Some might think of it as sort of early exam week kind of format that you'll get in high school. That might be someone trying to make good of a tough situation, but we will formally announce what we have when we're ready.
Absolutely. So the first state testing letter went out, just as a general overview of what to expect. And in there, I indicated, once we've finalized, we will be very, very specific in getting something out to everyone.
When is the testing?
Well, we have a bit of time, so not until April do we start getting rolling, and there are different windows for different assessments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to a bond update, just as some background, you know, coming out of the winter break and what happened at FMS, you know, a lot of us as a board sort of communicated to the administration, we wanted to have a deeper look at the costs and see where there might be possible savings. And Dr. McCursie sent a letter, a very detailed letter, multi-page, last Friday, detailing where we, where we're at, really, and tonight is the first presentation that's incorporating those new details and also a new level of detail that we haven't been able to bring previously.
Yeah, so Alex mentioned that I, every other week, it was every week, I get the keystrokes working and send out the great, great news for this district, and there is so much great, great news here in Hastings. And then, maybe because I went and shoveled snow on our day off, I was that much energized to really bring a letter from the heart. Now, my 95-year-old dad, who's a veteran of administration at Cornell and most recently MIT, still going, he reads my stuff. And he said, "Bill, that was a little long," but I did learn a lot. I did appreciate it. And as someone who used to journey as a dean at Cornell up to Albany to pitch for money every year, he said, "I get your energy. I get your passion. I get your heart. And I got some people to smile." I always aim to have some people smile every time I'm around them. But anyway, that was a big letter, a very important letter, and I put a strong statement in there about this great district, this great, great district is on the verge of getting subpar in the quality of our facilities. And in that letter, I also state, "We are incredibly conscious of the taxpayers." We're incredibly conscious of trying to find, and it was a phrase from Alex, "Where can we have, if you will, economic aspiration?" That's not an oxymoron, but where do we have aspirations that also are economical? And so I think from what you're going to hear now in detail, we've taken a big step on that. So that's my setup for now. A lot of detail coming from Maureen and Melissa on what we're now updating you as to where the bond is.
Well, I especially love that you run everything by your father before you say it.
After it's written and out.
So, yeah, so tonight, we're going to focus on, for updates, key updates. Wait, is this not working now? It's frozen again.
It's frozen?
Yeah. He said some nice, such a touchy here. Okay, thank you. So we're going to provide a budget update, so based upon the last time I think we were together publicly, and we're going over the budget, the current kind of bond considerations. There was, there were a few different numbers we looked at. We looked at a 42 or 48, like there were different variations in between. But I think the last meeting, we were largely focused on, when I think that was at the 46 million, almost $47 million range. So we started from there and working with our architects and looking at, thinking about some of the items that are being proposed, ways to either bring that budget in or reduce scope of the entire work. So we'll be bringing that tonight, and then as far as the Farragut addition, we also just want, both Melissa and I will provide some additional comments on, you know, the needs that we believe are still, you know, exist there even beyond our current situation with the flood and kind of, you know, remind of the Farragut master plan that was done and then some other instructional needs that are on the instructional end. And then, again, the timeline update with what is occurring with the flood and all the rest, that is requiring our architects and engineers, you know, we're kind of doing double duty. We're working a lot on the plans there, so we think it's best, and just in order to make sure that all of their work is completed and updated in our bond and our, all the different things that are required of them prior to the bond vote, we are recommending that that be moved to either mid to late June because we need a little bit more time to kind of, you know, work out through the process with them. Okay, so again, this is just an update where, you know, the board, as Bill mentioned, you know, wanted us to kind of look at the overall scope and see if there is opportunities. And today, we'll discuss some of the things that we believe are ways to bring down the scope. And again, we're looking, our first goal is to try to bring it down about somewhere between 5 to 10 million. And you can see, we're, I think currently, about 38 million with the scope we'll discuss tonight. And this new budget does reflect some concessions of things in which, reflecting on some of the feedback that we receive, both from a financial standpoint and then also for some of our folks that live in the adjacent neighborhoods, and some of the concerns that they brought up are reflected in what we're proposing tonight with this updated budget. And again, it's, we believe it still addresses the primary concerns that, and it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate any work, but it brings in some of the scope. Okay, so if anyone could read this, you have excellent eyesight, but anyway, this will be in the document. And when, when you see it on board docs and you have it on your screen, you can read it, so it's a little blurry here. But just, this again is just, you know, we want it there so people can kind of review, and you can see, we highlighted areas, and we put in kind of notes so you'll can kind of see what's going on here. Interestingly enough, there was one of these one-line item, and I wanted just to make sure it was correct, so I did increase the budget line on that. The construction of the new softball field, the previous budget that we reviewed at the last board meeting reflected a natural grass softball field, and we have had some discussions about would be, there be a, would it be better to put two turf fields, whether, you know, multipurpose or baseball or softball option, and then maybe eliminate the lights, looking at like ways to increase the amount of fields, but maybe reduce other scope. So because of that, and that's why that line item, when you go back and are able to review this later, is in green because that number actually increased. I can say, still with these numbers, and there's just some notes on this, I don't really highlight the majority of them, but I just wanted to call that out because that is actually an increase. But what we are proposing right now, what we've adjusted is we, in this, in this bond scope, we're recommending to remove the athletic field lighting. We are removing the stadium seating press box, and we also had some expansion for the bathrooms and storage there. We are also looking to reduce the parking and the site improvements. Some of that, the amount of parking is tied to the grandstand, so when you submit to the state, if you're suggesting there's seating for X amount of people, there's, that kind of derives how many. No, we still want to provide, of course, access, so we're not trying to eliminate it, but it helps us bring in that parking number a bit. That number is still relatively high, and it's under parking and site improvements because that's really addressing a lot of rock and some unknowns. We know that they did do environmental testing, and they, where they found rock was where there's that outcropping, which is, we know that there's rock there. It's kind of like on the roadway going up to the garage up there, kind of opposite. But, you know, as they said to me the other day, as, you know, we get further along, there may be an opportunity even to bring that site number, that parking number down a bit. We're just still being cautious because we just need to design it a little bit more fully. But that number does reflect a reduction of about, I think it was like $400,000. We also are looking, as I mentioned earlier, with the flood that occurred in the Farragut complex, it allowed us to reduce, of course, remove some of those line items, but there was also additional money for other areas, potential like other areas to modernize, and we did remove some of the scope there. We felt comfortable, you know, doing so. And then also, if you recall, in the cafeteria addition, there was, they were calling out, because what exists right now in that bathroom we currently use as somewhat of a community space when we have board meetings, they were, they were, that will, the kitchen area of the proposed cafeteria, so they were going to build a community room on the, on the other side of the cafeteria. But again, that was something that is not, you know, it's a nice-to-have, but we don't think it's something that we need to have. So that was pulled out to be roughly 1,000 square feet, and with the current price per square foot they're quoting, you know, it's still considerable. It was still over $1 million of, you know, of what, plus soft costs on top of that. So again, we, we've reduced that off of the plan. And then, you know, there may be some, so those were ways, and there's other things in which throughout the Farragut renovations, that we're looking at doing an energy performance agreement that maybe with some of the other areas of the Farragut beyond the work we're doing now, we have areas in which we want to upgrade lighting, some of which we may be, may be able to find other opportunities to fund that differently than outside the bond. So we're looking at other opportunities also to bring down other, maybe potential scope within this work. But with all that, as you can see, and if we go down to this next slide, which I know is, again, you won't be able to read well, the construction, the actual construction total is $26 million, like of just what the constructional cost. Everything below that other line is, I mean, that, and also escalation and contingencies and all the rest. So, you know, we're hoping as before it goes out to voters, you know, maybe there possibly be some opportunities to get these costs a little bit, you know, they, they're trying to be very conservative, of course. But, you know, again, even contingency, we have a contingency which is a, there's two contingencies that are listed here, one of which is a construction contingency, and that's the 12%, and then that's what gets added to that construction budget, and then also the escalation at 6% a year, which again, you know, is a healthy number, you know, just kind of looking at ways, again, not to play around too much, but like, you know, are we comfortable prior to this going out to poll and some of these numbers? Because there is $12 million on top of what the constructional actually costs us.
Can I, can I have just a pause, since we're on the top-line number? So currently, it's 38.4 million. Just since we're there, I just wanted to clarify something. So right now, on state-aidable projects, Hastings and Hudson enjoys a 40% payback rate from New York State. That's what we have.
Forty-six, yeah.
Forty-six percent, forty-six percent. And of this 38.4, do we feel like everything is set up as an aidable project?
What we typically do, we always do this with any bond we go out with, because there could be some type of exclusion, but we, any of the numbers we provide, we always assume like a 38% or 40. We don't assume the full aid ratio, just in the event that there could be an exclusion to, or a reduction.
Like it nets out to be a little bit less like that? Okay, so, but assuming that we're in the ballpark with New York State, this bond should net out to be 20, between 20 and 24 million, something like that, right? And I bring that up because one of the things we've brought up a lot here is the fact that our, any reasonable assumption is that our state aid ratio is going to change, and it's going to go down. And I just want to clarify if that's a reasonable assumption. Again, that's New York State policy. It's not federal. It's already kind of in the works, so if you can give some background on, just minimally, what the outlook is, you know, why, you know, there's a certain additional pressure for us to try and make use of the aid ratio that we have currently.
And one second.
Sure.
And when would the change?
So, so this is something, again, you know, I was actually asked this question. I had a conversation with somebody about this last week. I mean, historically, any of the expense-driven aids, which building, building aid is, it's not foundation aid. It's similar to other types of aids, like computer and infrastructure and things of that nature, that you receive like a percentage back on the expense, transportation, all the rest. I have never seen where they will take money away from there. So in other words, when there was, years ago, a gap elimination aid that the state had done, when they, and basically what that means is that they, you know, their revenues that they have, they were not able to fund their obligation, so what they, they kind of do is they just apply a reduction across the board, but they take it out of your fund. It wasn't foundation aid. It was called something, you know, they just reduced that particular line item, but they, they don't take, they've never changed. They don't, like, to Jody's point, like, they don't, once they've committed to that building aid ratio, they don't say, "Oh, no, we're not," you know, like five years in, they're not going to say, "No, we changed it," you know, so whatever that locked in. But it's at the time of when you get approval for that bond, whatever your aid ratio is, because they understand that people made that decision based upon that aid ratio. And then, you know, changing it later would be problematic. I mean, the state does things differently. I mean, arguably, they can just take it out of a different pot. That's how they would handle it, but they wouldn't touch that particular, I mean, I've never seen them to change it after the commitment is already done.
Right, but my point is that they, you know, even our neighboring communities, currently, our neighboring communities have aid ratios that are much lower than ours.
Yes, so the reason, well, there's some, the reason for the fear there is because, not this year, but last year, Governor Hochul, when she presented her budget last January, there was, she was suggesting that they were going to, you know, not only look at the foundation aid formula, but they were also speaking about either recalibrating, like these type of ratios, like kind of, because a lot of the data they're using to determine how much rate aid we receive is based on old data. So if they were to update that and come to find us less needy or so than that, like Irvington, I believe, is like 20%. So that, they're, you know, they're, I think people, anytime you have anything on the little bit higher side, there's always that concern it could go, you know, lower.
You're saying that then it behooves us, if we're going to pass this, to do it before January?
Yeah, I mean, this year, it's not in her proposal, but I guess the concern is you never know when that, that could change because she did, that was mentioned last year.
So we don't know.
Right, things could change. I guess that's the concern, you know, always. I mean, I think it is true that we do, we do enjoy a much better aid ratio than like some of our neighbors. So, you know, you just don't know, I guess, if that were to change in the future.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so as I had mentioned, you know, when you look at the overall cost of the construction, it's that $26 million number, but then with all the things. it's that $26 million number, but then with all the things that, um, are required and also just kind of some conservative estimates for contingency and escalation, all the rest, that brings us down to that 38.4 million dollar budget. Um, and then we can talk about, um, and this is kind of connected to that. And we've looked at this slide before, but this is just again, a reminder of if this bond was voted on come, come June, that the payment for, to repay this bond really would not start until about, was this the 20, 2029 school year? Because it will take about a year or so to get the project approved and then bid out and all the rest. And typically the first year when you, um, do receive approval, you would borrow a ban because your whole project, you wouldn't be able to bid it out and the first year you pay the interest only on that. So again, this is just a reminder that whatever is voted on, it come this June of '25, it would not really hit the, um, school budget till, till the 2029 school year. And here, this is just, it, it doesn't change a tremendous amount. Um, this is about, we're assuming about $635 per year, per household for this updated budget of $38 million. So when it was at 40 million, like I, I was looking for the, uh, it changed from the, we had one budget at one time for like 40 million, 500,000. So for like about 200 million, excuse me, $2 million savings is real, like real, roughly like $50 less a year per household. Just if you were curious about like, you know, as you remove a million dollars or a few mil, you know, what is that, what is that, you know, what savings is, is across the board there? So, um, just wanted to update that slide. And again, this is a reminder of the financing timeline. It was, um, information we reviewed before. And then this one is, I think, mine and then the next one is yours. So again, this slide, I'm not going to read it line by line, but this was just really a recap of how we, um, you know, how, why the addition was proposed as part of this bond. And PBDW, our architects, and that, that's part, it's, uh, the presentation is on our website, under our bond tab. And they did an extensive study of the Farragut complex over several months. And again, these are just, again, the, the main drivers that even with, um, even though we're able to share and, and make it work right now in the Farragut complex, that, you know, a lot of the things that were revealed in that study are still not going to go away, even with the, um, upgrades we're able to make in the Farragut. Because not only, um, was the Farr, the middle school using a, a lot, a lot smaller footprint of the building. And according to the study, that by taking it from the high school, then we would be creating kind of, you know, unintended issues on that end of the building. But most of the classrooms, both in the high school and in the middle school, about 70% of them are under state requirements in terms of square footage. And that's not only for general ed students, but it's also for special ed students. So again, a lot of these things are just as part of the record, as we, you know, came back to look at the scope of work, why, um, the, the, uh, that is still included, um, the addition, because we believe it is still needed based upon the work, um, of this study. And then Melissa will, so there's this, you know, some items in here in the record, you know, just in terms of like ICT spaces and a lot of the space, including even, um, as we look at what, what would go into the renovated cafeteria space if we were to get the addition. All of our science classrooms are significantly below, so things of that nature. Like it, it would allow us to not only, certain programs are, you know, uh, being impacted by the, this size of the current space for them.
So Melissa, before you go, let me, let me just sort of frame. First big part of this was, we heard clearly from the board, what can you do to bring down the cost? So that was the first part of this. The second part is, you've talked a lot about the need for instructional space, but give us more, what does that mean? And, you know, in just plain non-education jargon, give us what that means specifically. So the board's asked for that. So that's what you're about to hear now from Melissa. And if you read the long letter from me Friday, it hit the cost side and it hit the need side. And what we're emphasizing on the requirements recap, these are requirements. These are not nice to haves. Um, and now to get put even more meat on the bones of what do we mean by instruction? Because a cafeteria is something that comes after what we need for instructional space. Um, we do need an upgraded cafeteria. We'd have to spend money there no matter what. But that's an outcome of us creating the need for the instructional space. But Melissa, why don't you go ahead?
Can I jump in just, you know, could just add on to that point? One of the central tenants of what the architects and engineers had looked at is that where the cafeteria currently is, was originally, uh, classroom space. And it is perfectly laid out to be classroom space. And we do need, no matter what, we'd need to be a multi, multimillion dollar, um, improvement even to the existing cafeteria. And so the entire purpose behind considering an, an addition of a cafeteria was to free up that space, which at a very low cost can be rehabbed into classrooms once again. So, sorry to interrupt.
Not at all. So I just want to begin by saying schools are dynamic. We're either getting better or we're getting worse. We're not just static. You can't keep everything the same and think that we are not either getting better or getting worse because everything around us regionally is constantly changing, right? So we also have to just situate ourselves within a larger whole, right? We're a part of a much larger system. Um, so I just want to begin by saying that because we do have aspirations for things instructionally. And we do have things that are inspiring to us that we would like to be able to do for our students. So the first thing is that in creating the master schedule, which is which classes are happening when, where are students moving throughout the building? Creating that master schedule is the keys to the castle because everything has to fit within the physics of a day and it has to fit within a building. So the master schedule is directly tied to the amount of physical space we have. The number of rooms, when they're available, who can go where, when. And so space right now is one of the major drivers of the master schedule. It is a big one. And so one of the things that must happen first is that special education classes, especially ICT classes, hybrid classes, they have to be plugged in first in the master schedule. And that's because we absolutely must make sure that we are ensuring that we're meeting all mandates related to delivery of services, assessments, accommodations. So for example, ELA and mathematics, right now, they need a second room every other day to legally be able to run the hybrid program. And so we will need then double the amount of spaces because they have to fit somewhere. So if you're thinking about one portion of a master schedule, you need double the amount of spaces.
What do you mean by hybrid program?
So being able to have both the integrated and also the pullout, right? So that it's hybrid. So students are getting a differentiated approach.
Melissa, talk into the mic.
Sorry. They're getting a differentiated approach where they are immersed within the context of the integrated classroom. And also they receive specialized instruction that's really targeted, right? And so that is requiring two different spaces to be able to meet those mandates and what is best for the students who have those mandates.
And just to be clear, those mandates come from outside of the district. Those are required by law.
The mandates are required by law, right? So there are certain requirements that we have to meet in terms of ratios and delivery of service. So then when you think beyond that, another thing to be considering is the classroom spaces we have now are very well engineered for sit and get instruction, right? So there is a class, there is an adult in front of the room, there are tables or desks, and there is a delivery where there is, you know, a facilitator delivering at the students, right? A more aspirational approach would be a much more dynamic room, which allows for space to be configured differently so that there is no front of the room and the teacher-centered classroom, that there can be movement, there's space to be able to do that. So that's another thing when we're thinking about space. Um, but I do want to go back to potential program offerings. We would really like a much more robust STEAM STEM program. Um, we have AOK offerings, which are also very largely driven by the master schedule. Because if there's no space to schedule certain classes, then what winds up happening is the AOK classes that we offer are being offered because of who is available when with their teacher load, right? And that is largely driving some of the offerings because there's nowhere to put people at other times. Um, so to be able to build a strong middle school STEAM STEM program, we need a little bit more space to be able to move people around and create openings to unlock that master schedule. So for example, we have project lead the way in the high school. If we had a pipeline that was a bit earlier, that we got into, uh, opportunities that would ignite interest and curiosity and exposure to future career opportunities as students move it through and beyond the system and things like financial literacy and coding or a middle school STEAM program that was on a rotation incorporating robotics and engineering and design and computer science. And we were able to culminate in a capstone project with more authentic learning opportunities for students. You know, this requires space. It requires us to unlock that master schedule to be able to do that and situate the offerings where we can actually put students in a room and teachers can have space in their schedule because things can move within that very locked up master. Um, enhanced music offerings. It's my understanding that there used to be long ago, a middle school chorus room. Right now, chor, because of space, chorus is relegated to the blue lecture room, which is an appropriate space for board meetings where you have people watching because the board is meeting in public and it's the board's meeting. But for chorus, the way that it shakes out is that be, between transitions of class periods, risers ha, can't go in there easily, that there's no dedicated space. And so when you're teaching vocal technique, students are sitting in chairs and they really need to be standing on risers, which requires custodians to break them down, set them up, break them down, set them up. There's not an efficient use of time or best practice around enhanced vocal music, uh, for our students. So organization, time on task would be infinitely better. We would be minimizing transitions and maximizing our use of personnel, right? What people can be deployed to do rather than that, for example. And then, uh, of course, one of my personal, um, one of my personal favorites here too is a, a win block, win standing for what I need, which is a dedicated block of time for differentiated instruction. And so if we unlock the master schedule, we can create differentiate, like a period of time in the school day for differentiated interventions, enrichments, passion projects, based on their needs. And so accelerated content, any necessary remediations. But again, it requires space to be able to do this with students. And then finally, another example of a potential opportunity that I'll give is advisory spaces. And simply put, we need them. Advisory is in our portrait of a Hastings learner. It's one of our key action steps that we're hoping to accomplish. It's a key objective and we don't have enough room to accommodate advisory groups with appropriate student to adult ratios to have the advisory structure with that more intimate relationship building opportunity around community circles and, and just building that mentoring that can be happening. There aren't enough rooms to schedule that. Um, so those are just a few examples of things that we're hoping to accomplish. There are many, many innovative, exciting things happening throughout our local region. We need room to be able to do them. And again, I'll just say it again, schools are dynamic. You're either getting better or you're getting worse because we think about ourselves in relationship to others around us.
Any questions or comments so far?
Sorry, I'm more to go.
Yep. Oh, we're switching back. Can I, can I just pick up on that? Because one other thing, I remember we had, I had asked you about, hey, we have project lead the way engineering. To my eyes, it's been a huge success. You know, I know they, I mentioned that they had a biomedical program, which I thought was really interesting. And I said, what, what are the sort of obstacles that keep us from, from doing that? One of them is teacher certification. One of them is budget, which I knew. But this came, this point came up, which I thought was really interesting when you described that physically, you know, we have a schedule, it's a piece of paper, we can put things where, where they are. But those things actually have to, you know, transfer to a physical space in real time, in the real world. And that's where things get locked up. You know, if we have a class that we can only squeeze into this room the last period of the day, well, there's a whole bunch of kids that have something else that they want to do that last period. They're never going to get to take that class. So it's, it's idea, this idea of having more open spaces, more dedicated spaces, more flexible spaces is sort of the secret sauce that lets us imagine, uh, broader things than, than we do at the moment. So, you know, I think it's something we can look into with more depth, but I, I found it very eye opening. And I thank you for providing that level of detail.
Yeah, I might just underscore, we're part of the tri-state consortium and have been in that realm for a while. It's a complement to Hastings that were part of that. I'm also on the advisory committee. Melissa's coming off of three days in a sister district, you know, last year I was three days in Bronxville. Bronxville has that flexibility in their schedule. They also have one giant building, as you know. Some would say, why do we want to be like Bronxville? I say that with a smile. But there are some aspects of any district, be it where Melissa was for three days, you know, and we have others going out, that we have examples of the programs, substantive core rigorous programs, that that dynamic aspect that Melissa's referring to, that's where we're starting to slip a little bit. As great as we are, when we see and listen to our peers, uh, they, they got a little more room to operate in substantive core ways. So we're trying now, listening to the board, who's listening to all those who come to speak to you, to say, let's, let's put a little more fine point on why space matters right now for us, for our students. Not just, oh, give us space. It's nice, but there's a substantive reason for this and we are slipping.
Back to the boring stuff, the dates and things. So again, I, um, okay, now it's not going to work. Oh, there we go. Sorry. Uh, these are just dates, uh, just reminders of what we've done thus far. Um, the, you know, that we're right kind of toward the tail end of the secret review process. As I had mentioned earlier, um, you know, they, they've already received all the results on the borings and the soil testing and all the rest. They will be coming back, um, to us or to the board rather, at the March 11th board meeting with a secret determination. That's the, the current plan. I know they've already received back comments from SHPO, which is, um, also part of the review. That's the, uh, historic preservation, just in terms of, um, all of the work. Anytime you're adding additions to, to a historic, what are considered historic buildings. And similarly, they're looking, um, we have to provide some information in regards to the work at the Burke Estate that's being proposed. So all that and the results of that will be, um, presented at our March meeting. And then again, you know, I had mentioned earlier, and this is again, date is not set in stone, but just in terms of giving you some idea of, of what a potential June vote could look like. We're, you know, I just put on there June 11th, but you know, it certainly could be later than that as well. Just kind of giving an updated timeline. Initially, we had talked about doing that May 20th date. And as I had mentioned earlier, with all the, um, work that has and is occurring at the Farragut, we do need a little bit more time to make sure that the architects and all of us have enough time to review the secret documents and all the rest. So, um, we're proposing, um, sometime mid to late June for that bond vote. And then again, as a reminder, it really doesn't shift. I mean, one of the things that, um, I just want to mention when we talk about timeline, moving the vote from May to June doesn't impact the timeline of the work. And it doesn't impact, um, the timeline for, maybe to Alex's earlier point, you know, we, we currently know what is in the proposal for our, what we know our current building aid ratio is, right? So those things, but more importantly, if, if you miss, like, like as an example, even were to move the vote to the fall, you're going to miss another year of construction because it puts, it puts you off enough within, some of this work does have to begin in the summer. That's a key time for us. And by pushing the vote anytime beyond June, you would be pushing this whole timeline out a year in terms of the work.
Can I just, to add on to that, so, you know, if this vote were to move into the fall for that two or three months, a gain of time, because it shifts construction schedule a year.
It's a six months, it's 6% escalation cost on top of it.
Which was several million dollars when we looked at it, right?
Yeah. So I mean, in addition, that's like a, an additional cost you'd be bearing. So, um, just, just to keep that in mind. So again, moving it a month does not shift any of this, but moving it any further out would. And that, that's all. Now we're going to move on to the budget. Now we're going to move on to the budget.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, clarifications for the bond?
I, I don't need a point of clarification, this has been very helpful. I did want to comment and express my gratitude because I think there's been a lot of really helpful dialogue with the community. We've received many emails from many of you that are here tonight and we're grateful for that input and those thoughts. And I think we really, as a board and a district, have taken those to heart. And if you've seen this bond almost cut in half. And each time, we're sort of pushing and thinking and trying to better, to do better by the community, but also the children in our community to make sure our schools maintain their strength, to make sure our schools stand up and that our walls don't fall down because they're in disrepair. And that, you know, we're struggling to maintain the school these next two months and making do because our buildings are old and they need help and they need this type of bond work. So I appreciate the exchange and the dialogue. I'm looking forward to moving ahead and seeing schools that are a little more with the times. And when I look around this room, I feel hopeful. When I walked into Hillside today, I thought, wow, this building feels robust, like a real center of learning. And I'm excited to have that for our middle school and our high school in the years to come. And I'm excited for this community to invest in that endeavor.
Thank you. Yeah, awesome.
I have a question regarding the second field.
Yep. Speak into the mic.
Oh, yes, the, the second field.
Yes.
For construction of softball field.
Yep.
We heard pretty passionately from the field hockey players talking about that. Does that impact the field hockey field as a whole? And will there not be a field hockey field anymore?
No, so, so the, there's a proposal for a multipurpose field and that would be shared and rotated between this, like say in the fall, it would be soccer and field hockey would share that field. And then they would rotate off, like, you know, they're, like currently, there's a rotation of fields that, that occur. So we envision that all the, the teams that would need that size field would be able to rotate on that one multipurpose field. I think as we came down to it, knowing that the softball field was in the poorest condition of all our fields and the location, I think as we looked at the trade-offs building two multipurpose fields, that would have addressed the softball construction. So I think having an equitable share of the multipurpose field, field hockey would be picked up in that as well. They wouldn't have exclusive use of it. On the one, yeah. So, I mean, it may require that on a Monday or that, you know, in the fall where there could be two practices back to back, maybe it's on one, on a Monday, you're practicing on grass, but on, you know, Tuesday, you know, Tuesday, Thursdays, you're on, you know, kind of that type of, that's what I envision. And that's how schools do it. I mean, many schools have one turf field and they have the same amount of sports as we do and they manage it. And I think as we looked, I mean, we, we went initially just as like a very grand plan, there was something that had two turf fields and a softball. So I think if we were to really do everything for every team, that would probably require something of that, you know, even potentially more and with the lights. But I think, I think this would be, we believe it'll still be a very, it would be a big improvement to what is existing and I think we can, you know, we can share. I mean, I think the kids will all get a benefit of it.
Yeah, thank you. I have one more comment for Melissa regarding slide nine, the, the space question, not questions, upgrades. I really appreciate you saying about community spaces and community circles. I would like to see maybe in here, what are the areas, because we were bringing restorative practices to the school. And what I find in my work outside of here is that the biggest issue when putting a peer-to-peer mediation program, putting restorative circles into a school, is a space concern. So if we're bringing those programs in and we need space for those, if we can maybe reference those in here too.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a very powerful point because one of the concerns, particularly around the middle school, is behavior issues. I mean, our, our kids are good kids. Hastings, our kids are good kids. And yes, they have some moments. And particularly in our middle school, they have moments. It's a very crowded space and as we commit to restorative practices, as particularly with our middle schoolers, we don't have the space to do it. And, and it's fundamental. So I would say core reading, writing and relationships, right? And we got to get better about that in our middle school. But we need the space for that. So Dave, that's a very powerful point.
To your point, I just want to publicly shout out our Restorative Practices Committee. We have a very robust group of educators from across the system right now, working on next steps for restorative practices and they are deeply committed. They have, they have made sure that everything that we're thinking about has to do with, and they, they, I just pulled it up quickly, but just around the, working in a way that nurtures expertise and network and accessibility and having a systemic approach, making sure that there's follow-up and feedback, that there's flexibility, data-driven practice around the use of restorative practices and alignment with the attributes to the portrait. You know, just a very organized approach to moving this forward. So I, I did want to highlight that. I didn't put it in my, my comments, but this group is deeply dedicated and, and we want to get it right. And we want to make sure that we do have spaces and also professional learning that then drives the next level of work so that our students benefit. And, and to your point, it's directly tied with my bullet around Chair Council extending an invitation to the elementary folks so we could all get in a room together and talk about student behaviors. And I know that Bill, you've mentioned previously, like the middle school, because of space being in creates a bit of a behavioral sink, so to speak, when people are, you know, so tightly packed in. So all of this is interrelated and I feedback, so thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank particularly Bill and Maureen and Melissa for taking the time to go back over this, you know, meeting with board members, trying to listen hard and to try to make, keep, continue to make adjustments to how we're going to move this forward. I know for me, and I guess I can only speak for myself, but this, this is a very difficult process. And I think for us to get to where we're going to land, I think it's still a work in process and progress. And I, I know personally, I have not landed somewhere about turf at this point. I'm not ready to sign on. And I know that will come one way or the other. And as I think about it, I, I think about what it's like on our own personal lives if we have to do things for our own homes or place, you know, we're always making these difficult choices. We're going to make a difficult choice later about the school calendar and they're going to be, we can't have everything. And I think at this point, we're looking at needs. We're not, we're going very little into wants and wishes and, which is kind of too bad, but I think that's where we have to be. I don't want us to be kind of penny wise and pound foolish either. And, and then I think about having literally lived through several other bonds, this space and when we did the field and the auditorium at the high school. You also think about the difference of what the costs were then. I mean, I think it was dramatically less per, was it per square foot? So that in and of itself, like if we were doing this bond then, would have been a lot less money. And yet, when you look at the big ticket item, it's kind of like, oh my God, you know, how can we do this? But the more you sit with it, you realize, I realize, like, how can we not do this? And there's certain things we have to do. I mean, that's really clear. There are a lot of things that it would be really, it's really sad that we can't do. And I'm not talking about fancy things. I'm talking about things, because this is, we'll be here for the long term. We're not making a fancy middle school and high school. And but I think we do, to your point, Bill, we have to pay attention to where we are and not risk, I mean, even in terms of thinking about taxpayers, what taxpayers can afford, but also we talk about, you know, home values, if this is a school district that people want to move to. Obviously, I think we will always pretty much be a school district that people want to move to. I really do think that. Kind of location, location, location. But, you know, we're trying to balance a lot here and it's really hard. And I very much appreciate your being open and listening and going over and over and, you know, reviewing and rethinking.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say thank you, Melissa, for really detailing how this expansion or construction affects pedagogy and describing how the current rooms, which are below code in terms of square footage, are meant for old fashioned teacher in front of the room, children in their desk, delivery of instruction. And we don't live in that world anymore. So it, it's, it is a matter of us moving with the times. We, we can't, we don't want to be stagnant. And while the rest of the region moves and the rest of the world moves, we have to move with it. And our space needs to be adjusted. It's too crowded and too uninspiring from a pedagogical perspective. So thank you for sharing all of the details as to why we need these extra spaces.
But, but to your point, and something that we don't often talk about, that goes into some of this thinking, is we also have a lot of special ed requirements and demands that really impact our space and our budget. And we never really, and it's not that we have to go into a whole presentation just on that, but I think it's something that's really worth acknowledging in this district, that it's a big need that has kind of changed some of the space needs.
And if I may pick up on it, it's the correct, just equitable and impressive need. And many districts that go through a transition, and we should embrace the struggle, right? It's a struggle to come up with new space. This is a spectacular space. I'm in this building a lot. I was not part of the struggle to get here. It was a struggle, but it was the right thing. There's a new, new Lebanon school on the west side of Greenwich. I was superintendent when that struggle started. Special ed was going on in closets. They were using, this is Greenwich, they were using the back of an auditorium stage for music classes. Immense struggle there to get there, but they got there and but a core of it was special education. So it's that, it's embracing the right work there for the ethical and moral reasons. So, so many public school districts, that's often the driver, right driver. So that's part of it for us. But I'd also say, part of that struggle is compromise. So we've worked hard here to bring the board, the start of a compromise. And I would say to some of the students in the room who've been our most eloquent speakers, that there's going to be a moment here to embrace that compromise. That we went from three fields to one field, back to two, so there is full opportunity there for all of our teams to a greater extent. Back off on the lighting, we lose some hours, but we gain a field so that there will be dedicated field hockey time, there will be dedicated soccer time, there'll be dedicated quality softball time, baseball time. And we're also holding on to grass fields and, and investing in those. But that's all part of, to go full circle, we have to embrace the struggle, understand it, and that there are many things driving us here, but fundamentally, it's about what's best for our children. And, and to applaud, especially as part of that, applaud that.
I mean, apropos since we're sort of on it, you know, I just, I would just mention that one of the interesting data points, you know, the NAAP scores came out last week. It was challenging, you know, set of results nationally. But one of the bright spots, oddly enough, was Louisiana, which has always been at the bottom of the tables. But one of the things they did in their last legislative session was pass a law that mandated K through five intensive tutoring in school for any child that was identified as struggling. And I guess it would be sort of correlated to our MTSS, MTSS, sorry. And one of the bright spots from those results was that Louisiana, again, from a very low base, was that they showed the greatest increase. And I mentioned before how important, you know, we do, we do the MTSS because it's been proven to be so effective. And again, that requires space, that requires time, it requires people. So I just want to point out that you have a real view into a totally different situation, different state, different students, you know, making use of that same thing to great success and advantage. That's another, another sort of reason why we pursue those things, because they work. And when we talk about having interventionists here at Hillside and at FMS, again, it's because those things work and that's why we pursue them. Not because they're fancy, not because they're a want, but because they're what these children really need and benefit from. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I just want to add my thanks as well for, for all the input from the, from the community. And hopefully you see that we are grappling with this and taking things into consideration, moving the numbers down wherever possible and really, and connecting it to the curriculum outcomes. I think that was very well done, Melissa, and we appreciate it. And, you know, kind of want to see some community support for this bond too. So we're doing the best we can, trying to kind of gauge affordability and necessity for, for our students. So appreciate you all bearing with us as we kind of talk through this in this open forum. I, I think we've come to a good place, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, moving on to a report from our superintendent. You were just going to leave that posted and, and board docs, right?
Well, that, we're still the budget first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping way ahead. Sorry.
You're being optimistic, Alex.
Sorry, okay.
I promised three hefty presentations.
I lost count. All right.
Yeah, sorry. And, but yes, I'm not doing my, mine's posted.
Well, we confirmed that ahead of time. There we go. All right, thank you again for that. So we're going to move on to a budget overview. This is kind of a recap of where we're at generally and also a specific look at the non-instructional budget component. So Maureen, I guess it's you, right?
I think Bill is going to.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just frame it quickly and then let Maureen really work through it. So Hastings is traditionally broken, it's major budget presentations into two big parts. This is the first of that. We did, done some introductory work with the board. So some of the material you've seen here, you'd seen earlier by way of introduction, but this is now the first of the two big ones. The second part, and that'll be the early March meeting, will be the instructional side. This is, is everything else. There's a lot of detail in here. To the students in the room, don't make your PowerPoints this way, they're this way because, and I insist on it actually, because these are standalone documents. They're in the public record. We want people to come back and find things in these documents. So there's immense amount of detail that matters and some overarching material. And let me just jump to some of that overarching material and then I'll hand it off to, to Maureen. The overview of the presentation is here, purpose and goals, budget summary, the major factors affecting the budget. We are updating a little bit there as you hear some of the federal questions that are emerging literally as we sit here. Tax cap consideration, considerations, use of reserves. Let me hit slide three if that's up here. If you could just jump to that and then I'm going to hand it to, to Maureen. We, we have expectations in Hastings and we should have expectations. I've been here long enough to really be thrilled by the level of, of demand and caring for high quality here in Hastings. But it's high quality around and the buts are important. It's about the total student. Yes, it's about the, the intellectual side, but it's also about the heart, the social, emotional. So you see up here, first off, we have to have high quality educators. We need those robust academic programs. We need a variety of extracurriculars. So don't be surprised, you just heard us talk about me for a chorus room as we think about the middle school and high school. You see there emphasize the social, emotional wellbeing, the personalized focus. We want to keep class sizes at the places they are, the ratios we need that are best for our students. And our facilities, those last two, we want them welcoming, well-maintained. As tough as we've been in a sense in the bond discussion on us slipping behind potentially, we work like crazy here. The teams work like crazy. Our facilities people have these be well-maintained and welcoming and fundamentally safe and secure schools. These are the expectations Hastings has for us, you as a board have for us, and then that sets up what this budget has. So Maureen, why don't you take it from here?
I think you do the purpose, the next one, I think is yours as well. Slide four.
Yeah, I think the purpose is here, kind of building out what was just said. You know, we want to have the necessary resources for the district. Portrait of a Hastings Learner, that's still a work in progress, but we want to keep going back to that as, as in a sense a North Star with, with a new set of leaders in our buildings. We're, we're looking again at the portrait to refine that a bit, but that is, that is a key touchstone for us and it's aspirational. And a budget does, as many people in the room, the board in particular, yes, they're year by year, but budgets force you to look long-term. That's that strategic sense here. And so some of the details you'll get in a few minutes from Maureen, do take a long-term look. So Maureen, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, sure. And then the next one, I'm not going to read through them, but again, we, we do always put in the record, as Bill said, there's standalone documents and our annual budget goals, which are typically, you know, the kind of the same each year. And again, just to, you know, maintain our core values, create opportunities and invest in learning for all employees and as well as the facilities. Okay, so this is just kind of a overall summary. of a overall summary of of our budget in short. So, you know, Hastings, as we look, and later on in the slide presentation, we're going to go over some historical data, not not to belabor it, but it is very difficult. Like, we we can control what we can control internally, but in the last few years in particular, and this is no different than other districts around us, but two, two things that are had a major impact on our budget are both health insurance, the cost of health insurance, as well as our retirement costs. So for, for our district, this year, it's going up just shy of 10% our health insurance cost. Last year was 11%, the year before was 8.7%. And that's, you know, so just, but on a number that is already six and seven million, you know, it's a significant line item for us. In addition to that, the retirement system, again, that's, all of our employees are either in one or the other retirement system, the TRS or the ERS. And that is based upon, you know, the market does play into that and and different factors. But, you know, the, the rate of that increase, it it has been as low as since I've been here, sub 1%. So when you have something that's really low, that is really helpful to our budget. But the last few years, it's been in the double digits. It's right below 10% this year, but again, on the TRS, but the ERS is in the teens. So, you know, those two numbers, those external factors, we're given what those numbers are going to be for the next year, that originally puts, that puts a tremendous amount of pressure on our budget because those two line items alone will, sometimes can more or less be our allowable increase. Can, not so, not in a total, but it was, I think our, we'll go over the undistributed, which is our benefits, but those line items are over a million dollars of increase alone, just, you know, before salary increases or anything else changes in our budget. So again, you know, we're, we're seeing and just speaking to colleagues, many have not presented their budgets yet, but most people that I've spoken to are between 4% to 5% on rollover budgets, budget to budget increases, and depending upon what their allowable growth factors are. Similar, at least in the River towns, most of, most of them have had higher growth factors than we do. But with our growth factor this year, our allowable cap is 3.66%. And you'll see in this budget that a rollover budget actually put us higher than that, but we did, you know, we'll, over the next few budget presentations, we'll be able to highlight where, how we were able to pose that difference. Okay, budget overview. And again, this is just a recap of the numbers. Our budget to budget change is 4.36%. We are currently at the legal tax levy cap growth limit of 3.66%. And our proposed tax rate change is a negative 4.13. But again, just to explain that, that is largely due to the increase in assessed valuation. So that does not suggest that people are going to have a negative, you know, everyone will likely have an increase of their taxes based upon this budget. Again, these are just major factors that affect our expenses each year. Of course, Bill had talked about, you know, the expectations on class sizes and things such as that, that have some, as we put together our budget, we, we keep those things in mind, our programs, contractual expenses, and I mentioned pension and health. And then again, as we've been speaking about earlier tonight, there are state and federal mandates that dictate certain things to us that we have no control over as well. And then again, like all of us, have been experiencing the significant increases in utility costs. So I think, although we're thankfully only receive our gas from Con Edison and not our electric, we all know that, I know anyone that's sitting in this room has seen significant increases in utility costs, and we are no different, right? So that's also puts a tremendous pressure on our budget each year. And then, as Bill had stated earlier, with older buildings, even beyond the bond, there's always a certain amount of money we do have to set aside to invest in in both planned projects as well as unanticipated repairs that we have to plan for in our budget each year. So again, these are just the legal required ways to break down budgets. And tonight, we're going to go over what is considered non-instructional. So that will be the general support category, and you can see the items that are covered under there, and we'll go into greater detail. We'll be reviewing the transportation as well as the undistributed. Interestingly enough, as much as they're called on non-instructional expenses, all of them directly relate to instruction. It's just the way they are categorized by the state. I mean, transportation is solely used for students. So, and most of our teachers and all of our employees, their benefits are covered under undistributed. And again, that is a cost directly related to instruction. Again, budget realities. I mean, I think the one thing that, and we'll be discussing it a little bit later in the slides tonight, is the uncertainty in state funding. I think each year, this is always a concern, and more so as we think about, and we'll discuss a little bit about what is being, with, with the federal government and the impact on anything that, a change in funding, and what that impact would be to us if that were to be the case. So, you know, these are things, as we put our budget together, we'll be, you know, discussing until we finalize our budget and we get our final numbers. And then there's always other things, mandates that can be passed down to us without any financial relief to pay for them. And what we experienced this past summer is we did see some enrollment beyond what we anticipated. And that was not so much the overall enrollment, but sometimes special needs, different needs that with some of our students that enrolled during the summer. And we've been speaking about it, so I'll say it here, you know, over the summer, we ended up needing to add, come September, two ENL teachers that were, for just new students that entered the system. So again, these are things as we plan for our budget, you know, are kind of unknowns to us. So there's always some concern about, you know, when you're planning a budget now, but it has to be for a time in the future. There's things in which we have to be conservative in our approach. Okay, so, sorry, just clicker. It's my nails. Okay. Again, year to year variances, and again, just to review the, the main cost drivers, without anything new editor budget. So, you know, many times we have parents that are, or, or program leaders that are looking for new initiatives, new staffing, maybe some new sports programs or clubs. But even prior to being able to add any of that, this, the things listed here, and this is what, when we speak about a rollover budget. Now, we do have contracts that are up for negotiation, but we do assume that there's going to be a contractual increase given to all of our bargaining units, and we're using what is being, what other subtle contracts in the region, their units are receiving. So we did, you know, put that into our budget projections. But just as we look at the, the items listed on this page, even just with our same staffing level, we would have, our push ahead budget was $3 million budget to budget. And that would have put us, that, that's what we reported last week when we were over the cap number. So as I had mentioned, you know, it won't be necessary tonight, but as we present the budget on March 11th, you'll see some, some things in which we're recommending to bring us in under that cap.
Can I just highlight that? Because it's a really, you know, the push ahead is, that's our contractual obligations based on the current trajectory. We don't, it's non-congressionary, really. And that number, that increase alone was $3 million. The allowable tax levy increase.
1.7 million.
1.7. So we were $1.3 million over the allowable tax levy, just to.
And and it's closed by two ways. And we do have some revenues that are also closing that gap. So in other areas, right, but it would be that that's a differential, and if you didn't have those additional revenues, you would have, we would have had to made some significant reductions.
Right. And then when you open up your computer, so to speak, that's what you're facing before you begin. Thank you.
You're welcome. And this does take into account, though, some student placements and things such that we know, but, but anything new. So even though sometimes things seem insignificant, like, oh, you know, we get requests to add different things, that could even be $25,000, but we're like, well, we're already over budget. So in order to add that, we'll have to find a reduction elsewhere. So again, this, so as I was speaking about budget proposals, so the rollover budget was $3 million. In addition to, to that, when we were working with our program leaders and our principals that work closely with their department chairs, we had a request, in addition to the $3 million, to increase our staffing at another $1.1 million increases. And in what, and as we get into the instructional budget, we'll unpack this a lot more, but just as an example, so that would have put us at $4.1 million in our budget. So anything, and the things that we deemed that definitely needed to be included, then needed to come at reductions elsewhere. Okay. This is just some things that are included in the budget. We are recommending this year to do a transfer from our capital reserve to fund $250,000 worth of identified items that were picked up in the BCS from the architects. And that is primarily because although we're doing a bond, the timeliness of getting some of those repairs done and the dollar amount, we do have money in our capital reserve, and that would still, we would still have over $2 million in that capital reserve after transferring the 250. But this would allow us to get some of that work that really, we cannot wait two years to do. And it's, you know, not as expensive as some of the other work. So we're making that recommendation to do that transfer for this budget. And again, we do continue to prioritize a conservative approach to use of reserves because as, if you use them and don't able to put the money back, then, you know, you find yourselves with bigger funding holes in the future. So just as a reminder, we did get the governor's executive budget proposal in January. And the good news there is that it's, it was higher than we anticipated. And typically, once the legislators are working with the governor on the budget, we typically see a, an increase above what the governor proposes. But again, I think this year, there's some uncertainty in Albany with what's going on with the federal government. So I, I think right now, you know, we don't know if that will happen the way it's typically happened in the past. And again, we get our enacted budget, and hopefully we'll have that enacted budget prior to the board needing to adopt their budget, because that, you know, will be, it's important for us to have that number. Again, this is a reminder, the governor's proposal did call for an increase in foundation aid, and it did not include any changes to aid ratios for us. The only thing that's really been talked about a lot is the self abandonment, recommended budget, but everything else has been kind of status quo on the, on the financial end, only increases in, in funding. So, so Bill, I don't know if you want to touch on this, too?
On the federal funding?
Yes, so the changes.
Yeah, so I had mentioned earlier, just that, as you'd hope, superintendents are talking almost every day, a couple of times a day, as to what's coming out of, of Washington. We, you know, the superintendent Dobbs Ferry is particularly valuable, it's because many may know he used to be at a very, very high level in NICE, and now he's back in the superintendent seat. So he has a very keen sense of that intersection between the federal and state. I actually have my own background in that, but it's more important to listen to Ken and Dobbs Ferry, because that's New York State specific. So he has a very strong, clear statement that I'd shared with the board, that we probably after tonight will send out to all families here. And the simple point, as most would know, is that we do work in a constitutional democracy. And I'd say the following, regardless who is president, the executive does not have the power of the purse. That's congressional. And you use the judicial branch to try and make sure that all of that works correctly. We clearly know that's under challenge right now and under question. But I'm still remaining somewhat hopeful that those three branches of government will, will balance each other. So what's very, very important there also is that, that education is a state-directed legally and otherwise piece and locally delivered. So the two most critical governing aspects of public education are, in our case, New York State and this body right here. And that's what Ken's memo out to the Dobbs Ferry community reminded them of. And it's done in three paragraphs, very tight, in terms of what I've just said. So we all know our civics, but this is a moment to remember what brings us to a democracy and how it works. And then also remember that we are operating within New York State framework that says, keep all of our work going, that's in current question at the federal level. Then when you get to the dollar level, you can see that we actually are, thanks to the generosity and well-being of Hastings, that we actually get very little from the federal level. So if the worst happened, you can see on the slide how we would have to deal with it. And yesterday in a press conference, the governor, in no uncertain terms, is getting up, getting quite aggressive, as I'm glad she is, about the situation and saying that any loss of federal funding could have an impact on local property taxes. So we wanted to put in the project, the slide deck tonight, on slide here 18, I think it is, what that impact would be. So it's, it's not small, but it's also modest. Not far from us in Westchester County, it's a very different story. And obviously, New York City and other urban areas, it's, it's a very, very big, big situation. We could manage this, we could work with this, we could deal with it. Evan here, Maureen and I spent a lot of time on the phone today on this. That fourth bullet, though, that's our interpretation. Because as the governor said in the press conference, there's the local share, which is those bullets up above the first two. Then there's the state share, and when the states press significantly, they may have to do some things else, which could affect the foundation aid. So it's actually really important that as you listen to these two budget presentations, and then you dig into it with us, board, and, and all the rest, it's actually very important we're bringing you such a conservative budget. We're bringing you a budget within tax cap, where we've already begun to do a lot of heavy, heavy lifting within, so that we are ready for a difficult time. And I'm having to sometimes be Dr. No within the organization to say, great idea, but we just can't do that now. Great idea. I try not to have Maureen be the Dr. No. I get to play that role. But that's what we've been doing to bring you this budget. So I have expanded upon this one slide, but hopefully it's helpful to you as a board. And it is a moving target, but please, my hope is in our three branches of government at the federal level, doing what they were designed to do. And the final comment there is, when you see something in a executive memo, we don't yet know if that's reality.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
So again, this is a slide we show every year. It just really breaks down where 80% of our budget, and it typically may even be a little bit higher by the time we're finished with our budget projection, is salary and benefits. So again, we do start off with, when we do our budget, it's, it's based upon needs and, and the different directors and different building level people. They do start with kind of like, there's some years in which they may need, have more dollars in their budget. So it is like a zero-based budgeting model that we follow. Again, this is just our, our summary of our budget, and you can see where our budget is going up. In, in dollars, it's 2.0, almost 2.6 million dollars, budget to budget. And you can kind of see on the right side, the percentages in the different areas. And again, tonight, we're going to focus on the general support, pupil, transportation, undistributed part of our budget. And you can see the percent increase in each individual category there. And then on the lower half of the slide, that is our, what makes up our revenues. And the major areas are state aid, and of course, property taxes, and the rest are miscellaneous receipts such as sales tax revenues, tuition that we receive from other districts and from parents who parentally place, and some other items in there. We'll break those down at a, I think, I don't know if I have a slide in there tonight for those, but kind of just give you some more details there. With the appropriations of fund balance, we're, we're seeing a slight decrease, and that's primarily based upon, this year, we're, we don't believe we're going to be generating as much leftovers because we've had a lot of unanticipated expenses. We are recommending a transfer for 850 out of our retirement reserve again. And you'll see just a slight increase in our transfer from our tax cert reserve of about $100,000 more than we use this year. And as I mentioned earlier, we're recommending that transfer from the capital reserve. And again, as you can see, that with the addition of those revenues is, is helping closing the gap from the 2.6 million increase in expenses versus the 1.7 million we're allowed to increase our taxes by. Okay, so we're just going to, you know, and if you have any questions on these slides, you can see under the general support, these are the areas, the different program areas that fall underneath that category. I can call out, what we typically do is this kind of highlight where some of the differences are, because the majority of these numbers, there's no, no new staff being, being added to any of these categories. And most of the drivers are either by contractual obligations and/or, as I mentioned earlier, like utility expenses and such as that. The one item I just want to highlight is that last item there is the special item. Special items, again, that's not my language, that's the language we use to, for that category. That includes our general liability insurance. And not only Hastings, but we are seeing significant increase there. That is the main driver of that increase of $55,000. I believe that may have been like 35,000 of that increase or so is for insurance. And it didn't, it does not have to do with the flood that it recently occurred, it's just to do with the cost of our insurance is significant. We do, we are in an insurance consortium, and even at, at the amount we do spend on insurance, it is significantly below if we had private insurance. So, because of course... So, um, because of course, our, our facilities and just all the types of insurance we have to, to carry because of the school and, um, you know, even beyond the physical things of, that, things that occur with, you know, accidents or, um, unfortunately in schools, uh, Child Victim Claim Act and things like that, that are driving up the insurance. Not that we personally have those claims, but just as the overall coverage, that's why the, they're seeing an escalation in the coverage for schools also. So again, what I, what I've done on each, uh, slide after that is we, we tried to, um, highlight some of the changes in those general support categories. In the area of security, and, and we've talked about this at previous budgets, we have increased the amount of, um, it, it's a combination of, of our contracted security as well as security aids and monitors. And, um, we, we are seeing that primarily in the Farragut complex, the need to have more people in the hallways, um, in the bathrooms, and you know, just for the things in the last few years. And also because the access into that building is so challenging with the number of doors. So again, the increase, although it's a modest dollar increase, as a percentage, it may seem big, it may be like, it's about a $20,000 increase. But again, safety and security are, are something that, you know, as much as we try to tighten it up and to be as efficient as possible, it's just an area which we need to ensure is covered. And, and again, I just mentioned some of the, um, larger increases that were driving some of that general support. And we could always, um, go back, the details of these numbers are also listed in the slides in greater detail. So again, um, and then as far as the Board of Ed's, uh, category is going down, because this year, it reflected, uh, the voting reflected having two votes, one for the bond and one for the budget. Typically, we only run one vote, and that's why we're seeing a decrease in that category. And, and other areas are just where there's contractual increases. So I'm just kind of going through them quickly. Um, we are anticipating a reduction in some of our legal costs, and that's based upon the last few years, we're seeing the expense there, um, come down. We've had less litigation expense and less, uh, general legal representation. So I adjust those numbers closer to what they've been actually running the last two years. Previous to that, we, there were times in which the legal costs were three times this amount. So the last few years, the, um, legal has gone down significantly, and we don't anticipate having, um, significant legal expenses next year. Again, personnel, and these are, um, non-instructional areas, um, you can see the expenses there. Um, the, the number for, on the bottom, I, I may have to adjust this by the time we come next time. I just projected a number for public relations, but in fact, I think that number's coming in lower. So, um, right now, I'm projecting a $10,000 increase. The next time I modify this budget, that, that'll be a flat dollar amount. That, I didn't feel have that contractor just sent me, and I already finalized his presentation. So we actually know there'll be a modification, that number will come down a bit. Again, this is the category, um, for our, uh, buildings and maintenance departments. And as you can see, you know, the, the areas that are increasing really around the, um, the utility cost, and then also just the cost of some services, the cost of supplies, you know, to run a building and, um, some of the contractual, all the different types of, um, contractors and outside inspections and all those things. And, and the increase to those costs are reflected in here. Again, overall, the category is not going up significantly. I believe the, um, let me see what the nets, sorry. If I go back to that. And again, same thing with maintenance, um, it's not going up significantly. There was an item that, um, I just, and we'll talk about the things in, in greater detail, I think at our next presentation. There was a proposal, we do need a new work truck, and, um, it, it was in our initial proposal, but the type of truck we need is to do most of our plowing. So we, we have a few trucks, but one in particular is our workforce for all the plowing we do for our schools. That truck is, needs to be replaced. And honestly, we did have it in this budget, but it's about $85,000 to replace that truck. And it's also used for our fields, like for, um, the, all the dirt, and when we, you know, we have to repair the divots and all the rest of the field, that's, that is the buildings, that's the truck that is used for the, the, uh, facilities. And there's a maintenance truck also for like sheet rock and all the other materials. That truck, we did defer, but you know, between now and when the budget's finalized, I'm hoping we don't have to add it in. We just, yeah, we just are crossing our fingers that we can get through another year. But it is the truck we use for all of our plowing, so it is important, you know. And although the other ones do some of the smaller areas, this is the one that does the roadways. So that is something that even if, if we're able to get away another year, next year, we would have a line item for close to $85,000 for that truck. And I mentioned earlier that the security costs, and you can see there, and there's also, we're reducing some of our external security, um, and then it, it's kind of a flip-flop between the two categories. That's more, more security aids and, uh, at the Farragut complex. Again, the insurance amount I mentioned, oh, it was $51,000. So that is the main, um, increase there. And you can see that's an actual number that I received from them, so that is our increase. And, and unfortunately, I think it does, it does take into account your experience ratings, so I would imagine we're going to see a significant increase there next year as well. Even though that wasn't the driver this year, it was just based upon the overall consortium with, with the, um, the amount of claims that are coming in for CV claims or anything, it, it kind of impacted everybody's rate. Just as a review, this is our transportation category. Um, it, there's really two, two big buckets that are the drivers here. Um, our in-district, of course, is, uh, is a set amount, we're, we're in a contract. We rebid that, I don't know if you recall this last year, our in-district transportation contract went up 40% from what it previously was on a bid. Um, and, but that being said, we still pay less at other districts. So the cost of transportation is, has got another area where it has gone up significantly and just continues to grow. Um, and there's very few bus companies, so there, it's not a lot of competition. So, you know, it's like the same two or three people that bid on, i- if you're lucky. Um, as far as the increase for the out-of-district busing, that is driven, um, only on, um, the information I receive from special education, that there's some children that are currently in district or coming to us from preschool that will be placed out of district. And this is, the increase is based upon the need to transport them elsewhere. So it's really not, we actually had some students dropping off and some students coming on. So, um, that, that is the main increase. In that line item, it's based upon actual, you know, who we serve. The sports is, is an area that has gone up significantly, because not only has the contract gone up, the amount of contests, and because busing is so expensive, just by increasing a few tournaments for each team here and there, and adding as, you know, the other sports, as, as there's a continued desire to add more sports, this line item is significant. It, just to go out to one contest could cost $800. I mean, so you can see here that they were significantly under budget this year, and we're, this, the main driver of the entire transportation increases here is the, is the sports. $61,000 we're anticipating. And that could be more if we add any other sport to the, yes, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I mean, two things that aren't here for us right now, but again, it's that strategic look, is the whole idea of EV, electric buses, you know, where that is going to be with the state. The state, I think, keeps pushing out the deadlines on that. As I sit with superintendents who do their own busing, et cetera, meaning not they, but their district, um, that's a big, big issue, um, in terms of just the infrastructure of, of that. So that's not here, that may be something for us later, but because we're a collaborative, and we actually bus such a small percentage of our students, it's not as a significant issue. Last thing I'll note is that in every one of those Dr. No sessions I have with the team, they look at that in-district busing and say, hey, that's a, a significant number to save. And I say, yes, but look outside hillside and imagine all of that cars dropping off as opposed to even the buses. Uh, we just cannot do that without creating quite significant, I think, traffic issues and all the rest. So, but it's an example that we're constantly looking within this budget for savings. We just, and you as a board might think differently, we just as an administration and some feel that we, we just can't bring that reduction, because it would be quite a logistical challenge, to put it mildly.
Yeah, and, and I also don't think even beyond that, I feel the, the people who would be the most impacted by reducing are the most, the people who most need it. Because I deal with the people on the busing, since that's an oversight of area that I oversee, and I speak to the parents that are, use the busing. And I know that there's a lot of people who do use the busing, and, and there's a lot of people who would like us to expand busing on the other side of it, because there's many areas of Hastings that are not easily accessible for walkers. I mean, you know that. And, um, and because we are, we, there's districts like Dobbs, Irvington, and Orsley, um, they have, uh, much more in-district busing because their limits are like less. So if you live like a half a mile or a quarter mile for any of their schools, they bus you. So their in-district busing is double and triple our cost. So I, I think even the level we're at, I mean, I know sometimes think, people think that's a solution beyond the traffic. I think there's a lot of people that use it and that need it. And I think even if we could figure out the logistics here, there'd be a lot of people that would have a very hard time getting to school here. So I, I, I would never, I mean, firstly, I don't think that's a good idea. But, um, a, as you know, it does require a referendum. The board could not choose to eliminate that, it would require a public referendum to change it. And it would also require a prof, public referendum to, like, to allow more people, because occasionally I'll get people, they'll say, my fifth grader is able to ride the bus, but my sixth grader is not, and I live in, you know, far enough away. But the, I can't even allow that, because it, it is required by pub, public referendum to change any, um, mileage limit, any type of mileage, um, allowance for transportation.
Oh, just noting that, that 35 increase, um, and I'm all for sports, but I'm also curious as to like how it's divided across sports. Is there any way we could get that sort of disaggregated?
Yeah, I think, yes, we could, definitely, yeah.
Also, just to mention, you know, when we have, it's a common occurrence here, we've discussed it before, that we have home games that because of the inaccessibility of the fields, we have to reschedule, you know, and it's, it's $800 to $1,000 each bus run when we do it for sports.
Depending on where you're going.
Right, but it's about, let's say, $800. And we, we have spent each year, was it fair to say, an additional between 20 and 30 grand on those, relocating those contests?
Yeah, I, I would just, I just want to check with Drew to make sure I have the accurate amount that we're moved, you know, because it, um, yeah, I know he had spoken about that at one, one of the meetings. So I think there's definitely times in which they're moving, you know, kids off to play at, at a field where it should have been a home game as well. But I, it just to know, I mean, busing is, is such a, is such a cost, so even when we look to add, um, there's some, some kind of proposals that were coming about, you know, adding, and I think people may think, oh, it's just, you know, a couple bucks. I'm like, you know, that, that in itself, the, the transportation alone, depending on the sport and depending, you know, like golf, actually, they do, um, they, we don't, we used to provide it for practicing years ago, but now they provide their own transportation for practices. But anything that would require, like, an off-site, you know, when we have these merged teams, and that's why we're very, you know, we, when we are merged teams, there's that expense. And if there are children that need it, then you would have to provide it. So it becomes trickier with the merged sports too. Oh, we just, you know, go over there. It's like, with the busing alone, could, more than having a coach here do it. So they're not so, um, so anyway, but as, but the main driver in this category, or the biggest percentage driver is actually the sports transportation. Um, and again, I, I try to put a summary, I'm not going to read it, but again, this is just so you can kind of highlight the, um, increases or decreases on each slide. Again, changes in the undistributed, this is where, um, our debt, undistributed is all the employee benefits, and it also is the debt. So that's debt payments for our bonds that are also in that category. Um, but there, the debt is pretty much flat, so there's no, um, increase or decrease there. But the, the main drivers, and we'll get to that slide, are really that health insurance and the, um, retirement system, as I had mentioned. And then as far as the undistributed to, um, capital, as I had mentioned, we are currently recommending that $250,000 transfer, and that will be funded by the, um, amount we're recommending to take from the capital reserve fund. And each year, it is important for us to continuously try to at least have 250 to $1 million, because I think that also helps us then to address some things that don't end up increasing to a bond later in time. And, and also, it's, it's a timely way to address things before they become significantly more expensive. This is just some examples of the things that, that $250,000 that would be, um, be done with, with this transfer. Our current backflow prevention, and this was noted on our BCS earlier. So these are like really timely, important repairs, I'm not going to, you know, they're, they're listed here. Um, and there are things in which really should not wait two, two years to be addressed. And, and quite frankly, they could, the first one in particular, we're out of compliance, so it does need to be addressed. So these items are going to, more or less, add up to $250,000. And just again, to highlight, you know, our retirement system payments, I mean, thankfully, the TRS, and that's because we had a little bit of wiggle room this year, so although there will be an increase there next year, that, that's, um, budget to budget, it's only about $27,000 increase for us on the budget line items. The ERS, on the other hand, though, we are seeing, and this is driven by two factors. Um, the, the amount of this year's budget reflected, uh, a lower amount of aids. And since this budget was adopted, there was about, I think there were either eight to 10 aids that were added. So as we, earlier in the year, kind of went from like what we adopted and now what has now happened, so those folks are, um, it, it's, it's also because we have more people than, that are in that retirement system. So part of the increase there is the increase of the, of the actual rate that we have to pay, and then there's also, um, an increase in the number of people in that category. So there's two, there's two things, right? There's the amount people get paid, the amount of people in it, and then the rate itself that determine the increase. And then again, just obviously, social security, as, as wages go up, of course, we'll have an increase there. But then again, as I had mentioned, the main driver, and you can see the, the line item, and the, the three line items that are related to health insurance are the health insurance waivers that people receive if they do not take our health insurance. But those are also tied to the percent increase in health insurance. So those three items are about 700,000, over $700,000 in, in cost increase. So again, the total number of our benefit increase is 1,380,000. And this, again, you'll see there's no real increase of our, our debt service. You can see it all listed here, it's just part of, um, the undistributed area, but it is flat for next year. There's a slight increase on the, um, principles, and then there's a, a reduction on the interest. And this is just the way that the debt is structured, which is good, because we're paying more to the principles next year. Again, this is just the, the way the sheet is, is in, in greater detail. So again, just basically reflects what I just went over. And then, again, the revenue overview that I had mentioned earlier, you can see here the categories of the different items that make up that other category of other revenues. One of the, although it's not a huge category, you can see here, we get that solar rental or the solar panels that are now on the Farragut complex and some here as well. And then the other items, um, a, a, a big line item for us the last years are, uh, one that has increased significantly is the interest on deposits and investments. Because as we now know, like, the, the investment income has been very good the last few years. A few years back, we were receiving no money in this category when the, when the Fed cut the rate to nothing. So the last years, we've enjoyed some additional revenues in that, in that category. And as you can see that, you know, we're just projecting some increases in what we, um, in, in that line item, that is helping to offset some of those other expenditure increases. And then again, the, uh, we're showing an increase of total state aid to about $470,000. We are showing an increase of sales tax of about $75,000. And then you'll see the other increases, the overall increase to reserves and fund balances around $150,000 more than we use this year. And the remainder being made up with that property tax at 1.7 million. Now, again, I just included this, I think this was something that the board had asked, and just to try to get a historical perspective of budget growth and tax growth and all the rest, um, as we, as we reflect, um, on at least the last few years. And as I mentioned, much of, um, would, I can say the last few years, most of our budget increases from external factors, not internal factors. So as I mentioned, each year, we're given many, for the most part, the last, when there's been a request to, um, add something, we've done it by taking something else away. I mean, as we know, even like last year, I don't want to bring it up again, but you know, with the music and things of that nature, but that is, those were done because there were needs elsewhere that we needed to address. And, and we've, instead of just, you know, continually adding to the budget, typically when we add, we are reducing elsewhere. So again, I just, you know, as I had mentioned earlier, it's very challenging, because the health insurance retirement system payments in the last four to five years are significantly higher than they were previously, and our budgets are still coming in at a lower budget to budget than they were historically when those rates were lower. So, you know, it, it, that's why sometimes, as much as people may be upset when we have to reduce or not be able to add something, it's, it's, we're really locked in because of all these external factors. able to add something, it's, we're really locked in because of all these external factors that are making it very difficult for us to keep our budgets at a lower, a lower number. So, I mean, just to kind of, I do want to go back.
It's just interesting because, you know, the reality, again, we're talking about non-instructional budgets. This is not money that's spent most directly on the students, that in reality, we're sort of a pass through for the costs of the ecosystem around us. So, but what you're saying, these costs get passed on, the taxpayer to pay it, but they don't directly benefit nor reflect what we're trying to do. It's just the ecosystem that we live in.
Well, if you go to slide thirty-nine, you look at the sales tax, I mean, that's, we don't have a robust downtown, right? That, that can give and contribute to the schools. It's all on the backs of the taxpayers. So I guess the real question is, when you turn to that, like what can our village do to raise, have more stores, have more things going on, so that can really contribute to what happens in our schools? I mean, it's a very low number.
And actually, I think that number is our county share. So I don't, I don't even, I mean, maybe the village generates that much. I don't know even if, it may even be, I mean, I'd be, it may be, I mean, there's some correlation between it, but I don't even know if that, if in fact, that is the amount that's generated here, or do we just get, I think we get a share of the county sales tax too, to be honest with you. But now I'm kind of interested to see what, in fact, we're collecting.
I want to know that too.
There may be a correlation. I think with the assessed valuation, I think when there's more businesses downtown, like when there's empty storefronts, they actually file tax certuaries against the district in which we have to return their taxes that are paid. So even if it's owned, when there's, the owners of those properties, if they have empty storefronts, we then have to return a good portion of their property taxes to them.
They have a three-year look back for that, right?
Yeah. So that's the real impact. That means that we're not getting money generated from there at all. And if anything, we have to pay it back, which is even worse, because then you have to, if you don't have the money in your reserve, then you have to, I was talking to my colleague in Orangey, and they didn't have a reserve and they used to have to borrow. You have to borrow, you know, debt to then pay back money that you already collected. So that's the worst case scenario. But it definitely is more helpful to the schools when there are more businesses downtown, because empty storefronts then come out of our coffers of returning tax dollars. So again, I know that this was, we always have all this historical data. And just to kind of go back and you think about the days in which the budgets really grew here. And as I said, in the early two thousands is when the budget really doubled, went from twenty-two million, you know, in a short kind of period of time. And at those times, the retirement system payments were not even at the historic highs that they are today. So, you know, it's not to say, but I think over the last multiple years, every budget has just been done by like anything that comes in has to come out. So, you know, again, it's just here for in the record, because I know some board members were inquiring about it and just trying to get a sense of, you know, how we've been looking back at least for the last, you know, four or five years. And I just kind of included all of it. But you can really see from, really from 2010 on, we've really been quite low. In some years, our budget to budget increase was actually a decrease, even in, and these were coming off of the 2008, 2009, you know, terrible economic times. And you can see, like, we did try to respond to it when possible. But looking at more recent years, you can see the increases starting in nineteen twenty and really, again, the pandemic years and the concern over, the uncertainty over state funding and all the things that we were all uncertain about at that time. And you can see really where there was an attempt to bring in those budgets at lower budget to budget increases. And in 2021, it was below one percent increase budget to budget. So again, now the last few years with, as I had mentioned, really starting in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, the year before that, I think the health insurance was about four percent. But the last few years in particular, that's put a lot of, you know, a lot of, just starting up, opening our budget, that's added a good, you know, one to one and a half percent of that increase is just the health insurance. So everything else is kind of where we're more local control, and then the remainder is like external to us. So just, this is just for, if you wanted to review some of those numbers, if you have any questions on them. And I did include, because tax levy is different from tax rate, right? So that there's the tax levy, which is the amount of taxes we're increasing. And then what is the corresponding tax impact? It gets a little tricky now because with the assessed valuation, it's difficult to know. We can only control the levy amount, but we can't always control when people have their assessments up or down. They may be experiencing a higher tax rate, which has nothing to do with us. I think with the reassessment the last few years, you know, we've seen, people have seen, in some cases, dramatic increases in their taxes. But that is to do with the reassessment of their home, not necessarily the budget. So just.
Right. It's the same tax pie, it gets distributed differently.
But it may not, may not, you know, I think the only thing, like I said, is we, the only thing we can really control is the increase of the levy. And that, for the most part, is, that's why usually we don't focus too much on the tax rate. We just say, you know, we're increasing the tax levy three point six six percent. So, you know, more or less, that would be the increase to most homeowners, I believe, if nothing else were to change. Again, the tax cap summary, we've gone through. This is just the formula. We just always keep it in all of our records. We're required to, you know, show it. And we put that in our budget documents as well. And as you can see, our allowable limit this year is three point six six percent. And I, and again, there's some slides here that just explain a little bit in greater detail the different components that go into deriving how you get that amount. About, you know, with the growth factor. And the growth factor is individual to each district. There's years in which we've had a zero growth factor. There's years in which we've had a higher growth factor than we have this year. And that, that is different for each district. And again, this is something is in our budget presentation each year, because the tax cap, although, it does present challenges, because if you have some individual expenses that, as I mentioned, students that may come in that have different types of needs, the tax cap formula is not flexible, that it's just like a straightforward percentage. And if you have expenses that are individual to a district that exceed that, you just have to work within it. And again, just a reminder, you know, tonight was the shorter of the two presentations. It really is going over the smaller piece of the budget. And then when we come back to, we actually moved up our instructional budget to March eleventh. I think initially on the schedule, I think that was just kind of a mistake, to be honest with you, because usually we do do it in the beginning of March rather than much later. So this is the March first date that just has to do with, we're required to submit our tax levy cap to the state in what we anticipate is going to be, you know, what we're proposing as our tax levy. And then on the eleventh, we'll have the much greater detailed instructional budget. And then the other dates, you can see here about, the important dates for the board about adopting the budget and the budget vote.
Maureen, thank you.
Sure.
Any questions, comments, additions?
Let me just underscore, I know we want to move on, but the tax cap challenge is slide forty-seven. I think that's particularly important because the superintendent's talk, and as I mentioned now several times tonight, we talk a lot, this phrase, piercing of the tax cap, which may be a superintendent phrase, is on the minds of every superintendent, as wealthy or not as their district or community is. And then you have some people say, well, the tax cap was never designed just to get up to. Well, this slide tells you why we worry so much about it, because there are four, five bullets here that talk about how dynamic the expenses are around us and that really out of our control. And so just staying this year at the match to the tax cap is an extraordinary effort. And we hope the board will endorse that when we get there. And you'll hear on the instructional side, what we've had to do with various ins and outs to make that work. Still have very high quality programming. But anyone who wonders about the management of a tax cap and why superintendents are worried about that and potentially having to go above it, this slide forty-seven puts it all right there.
Yeah, thank you. Moving on, I'm going to note that I noted a while ago that superintendent's highlights remain in the record on board docs, but we weren't going to pull anything out.
Yeah, I'll email that out separately to people so they see it, because it's a very important report, but I want us to focus on all the work tonight.
Thank you. And Dr. See, is there anything you wanted to pull out from your report?
I just wanted to make mention that the work of the K-12 Gender Committee is starting tomorrow. We had to postpone. We had some very important reasons to make that decision. Other things were mentioned earlier within the context of what I spoke to.
Okay, thank you. And again, it's available online as well. So thank you all for being patient. We're going to open up for public comment. If people could just respect the three-minute rule. I believe our district clerk is going to time you, right? Good evening.
Good evening. Natalie Berry and I wrote this letter together on Saturday and sent it to the River Town's dispatch. Things are changing so fast that Natalie will address updates in her upcoming comments. As a follow-up to our January letter to the Hastings Board of Ed and the dispatch, we are writing of our increasing concerns about upcoming cuts to federal funding and their impact on the thirty-eight point four million dollar bond. While a small portion of the bond covers necessary upgrades, it also includes many extra major renovations and enhancements, including a two-story glass atrium cafeteria, a new metal and glass entryway, and a significant reconfiguration to the Burke athletic fields. We feel that a bond of this size and scale is not only a burden to the average Hastings taxpayer, it is also irresponsible, given the current political climate. The president is reportedly working on an executive order to abolish the Federal Department of Education. We know by now that this is not an idle threat. Hastings schools currently receive eight hundred thousand dollars a year in federal funding for Title I and special education programs. These mandated programs will need to be funded regardless of whether or not the federal dollars come through. New York State currently receives one billion dollars from the federal government each year to help cover the cost of these programs. What will happen when the federal funds are cut is that New York State will need, with its greatly reduced budget, to prioritize funding for higher need districts. Hastings will not be a priority, and taxpayers will be holding the bag. Our district needs to be focused on funding essential to educational programs and conserving monies in these uncertain times. We recognize that certain repairs and system upgrades are long overdue. We would support a greatly reduced bond that would address these essential reparations, which the BOE estimated to be around eleven million dollars. Saddling the community and the district with such an expensive new project at this time is eminently unwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Hello. Hi. Tracy and I wrote that letter less than a week ago. There have been a number of developments.
Just use the mic.
Can you speak into the mic? There have been a number of developments since then, a couple of which Maureen and Bill mentioned. Unfortunately, our view of the situation isn't quite so rosy, given that we may have a constitutional crisis at hand. Several news outlets have run stories about the potential impact if the Federal Department of Education is eliminated. On February eighth, just three or four days ago, New York City Schools Chancellor Melissa Vilas Ramos said, "We're potentially looking at federal cuts that could contribute two billion dollars of our budget." The same day, Senator Kirsten Gillibrand and Governor Kathy Hochul warned that cuts could impact Title I, Special Education, and Early Childhood Services throughout our state. To be clear, Hastings schools will be obligated and would want to provide these services with or without federal and state funds. Governor Hochul said that much of the money our state receives from the federal government goes to local school districts. Here's a direct quote from the governor. "If that money is jeopardized, what can I tell you will happen is if localities lose that money, they will have to raise taxes." In our community, according to last year's revenue summary, our school district received a little over eight million in New York State funding. We saw today that we're incorporating eight point six, I believe, million in next year's budget. That's in addition to about eight hundred thousand in federal funds. It's not an insignificant amount of money. As we all know, Hastings has a very small commercial tax base, so much of the rest of the funding needed to run our schools comes from property taxes. To recap, our district approved a bond for Hillside several years ago that the taxpayers are still paying off. Our preliminary school budget that you went over today for next year has a tax, a recommended tax cap just below the tax cap. And the board is still moving forward with a new thirty-eight point four million dollar bond. How could our community support all of this, plus a potential eight or nine million dollar shortfall, whether in total or in part, in our school district's annual budget? These are extraordinary times, with unimaginable cuts happening to many of our country's agencies and departments. A loss of federal funding for education, whether all or in part, is very possible. In light of all of these uncertainties, our district should shelve this ambitious bond and instead focus on what absolutely needs to be fixed in our buildings. More importantly, we need to come up with a contingency plan for how our schools will continue to function and provide the services our community expects should federal and state funding disappear or diminish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I might have to raise it a little bit.
I'll try my best. Alex Slunias, fourteen Euclid. I'm here to give my support to Calendar A. During the last board meeting, there were many comments that focused on politics rather than academics. And I hope in the future, the board members can prioritize how the calendar impacts to, based on my own possibly poor accounting, Calendar A has forty-two percent of the school weeks not being full weeks. Calendar B has forty-seven percent of the school weeks not being full weeks. Both of these percentages are pretty bad, but at least Calendar A is less negatively impactful to kids' learning. Additionally, with Calendar B, families will be pulling their kids out of school that pre-Christmas Monday and Tuesday. Add on top of that, that some of the teachers will be taking off, and you've created the most ineffective and low-attendance school days of the year. I implore you to support Calendar A. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Hello. Whitney Brokowski, one thirty-three Fairmont. I am reading a letter today signed by six hundred ninety-one Hastings residents and district parents. We'll forward this letter with signatures to the administration and board following this meeting. We are writing with extreme concern in regard, in regard to Trump's executive order ending radical indoctrination to K through twelve schooling. We urge the Hastings-on-Hudson School District to resist this order with every means available to them and take all action necessary to preserve curriculum related to race, LGBTQIA plus identity, and all other DEI programming without dilution or censorship. Human rights and civil rights are cornerstones of our democracy and must be defended and upheld. We pledge to stand beside the district in this critical fight to protect our most vulnerable children and provide an education that will equip all of our students to become informed, passionate citizens of the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Hi, everyone. I've been permitted to quote my middle schooler, who is non-binary, and said last year, "I don't need people's acceptance. I need them to be educated so that they will respect me." When we're missing vital aspects of our education, it makes a difference to our students. I learned this at around the same age as my eighth grader, when my high school biology teacher told my class that he did not believe in evolution. when my high school biology teacher told my class that he did not believe in evolution, and so because he had to teach it, we were just going to breeze through the material in one day. This was in the westernmost county of Appalachia in Kentucky. And I do not share this to say bad things about my home state. There is, Lord knows, enough people doing that already. I share it because that kind of denial of education is actually still going on today in many places. When I think about that, I think about how incredibly grateful I am for this district that is so dedicated to excellence in so many areas. I feel very certain that if something like that happened here, no one would stand for it. I'm here tonight to ask that we stand with the same strength and clarity for every aspect of education that supports and centers the well-being of all children. In December, when our school district experienced a collective act of cyberbullying, we felt as a community the helplessness, the fear, the anger, and the despair. I'm sure I wasn't alone in wondering, "How can someone be allowed to do this to a school community? How can we live in a world where this happens?" But the question I keep coming back to is, "How do we respond?" It occurred to me that this act of bullying we shared is what young people on the gender spectrum are at risk of experiencing every day. When we teach our students to respond to bullying, we ask them to be upstanders. It concerns me that the K-12 Gender Committee is specifically referred to as inviting differing perspectives, language that seems to leave open the possibility for a part of our students' education to be denied. I know that Hastings values diversity. It's a core aspect of our past, present, and future. Yet I have heard it asserted again and again, as recently as the last board meeting, that diverse perspectives aren't tolerated in Hastings unless they align with one right way of thinking. I know the attitude that people are talking about, and I have heard it from both ends of the spectrum. I also know that for every one person who might say we all have to think the same way, I have 10 neighbors who will happily sit down and talk about our differences. Our children benefit from that, just as they benefit from seeing the community model the response to bullying that we teach. And I'm gonna wrap up by saying, I want to ask that we, as a district, be very clear and strong, that we will not be distracted from our core mission to educate whole children, not the individual parts that we see as valuable because they fall under the right category of learning, but their full, whole humanity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, what was the name?
That's the cue.
I see.
I'd just like to preface by saying that I'm very much in support of the Hastings gender and inclusivity lessons.
Please speak right into the mic.
Sorry, but today I'm gonna be speaking about the bond. So, my name is Siri Rosenberg, and I'm a junior here at Hastings, and I'm a member of the varsity softball team. First, I'd like to thank the board for listening to our concerns and for including the synthetic turf softball field in the updated plans. This is a huge win for our district, and we're excited to see that students' voices are being heard. And synthetic turf field will provide us with a much-needed, safe and consistent playing surface, and we're grateful for that. However, while we're thrilled about the synthetic turf, I do want to express my concern about the lack of lighting in the new proposal for softball and for the fall sports you mentioned, soccer and field hockey. Right now, all three sports face the challenge of limited daylight. Practices and games are constrained by the hours of the day. Last spring, we had to stop games early because it got too dark. That not only affects the outcome, but also the moral of the team. Lighting in the field, lighting on the field would extend our practice and game times, allowing us to complete more games and practices without the pressure of the sun setting too soon. It would also help us schedule evening games, making it easier for our families and the community to attend, which would help build investment for our team. Lights would make our field more versatile, providing more opportunities for us to play and practice no matter the time of day. They also wouldn't force field hockey and soccer to compete for limited daylight hours, and they too could have more consistent practice and game times. While the turf upgrade is a huge improvement, I urge you to consider adding lights to this proposal. It's not just about the field itself. It's about giving us the resources we need to succeed and allowing all student athletes to succeed to their highest potential. Further, we know that there's research on screen use in students' mental health. We need to be outdoors. These are uncertain, these are uncertain times, already taking a toll on our mental health, and having more options outdoors will, you know, help. Again, thank you for the synthetic turf field. We know this is a step in the right direction, and we're excited to see what it will mean for our district's future. Now, with the addition of lights, we can take full advantage of this new facility and make sure we have the best possible environment to succeed and proudly represent our village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Good. My name is Lola Norlander, and I'm a junior here at Hastings. And I also want to say that I support the gender and inclusivity lessons, and I'm also gonna speak about the bond. I want to begin by saying thank you again for hearing us and including the synthetic turf field for softball in the updated plans. This is a big step forward, and it's something our team has been asking for and fighting for for a very long time. A synthetic turf field would provide a safer and more consistent playing surface, just like Siri said. However, I also want to bring the attention to the fact that the updated proposal doesn't include lighting for the field. While turf is a very much-needed upgrade, lighting is also a crucial element that we need in order to truly make the most of this new facility. Without lighting, our practices and games are limited to daylight hours, which can be a real challenge, especially during the spring when daylight hours are shorter. This is also an issue for soccer and field hockey, as they would need to complete for the field in the fall, like during limited daylight hours. As Siri mentioned, last spring, we had to stop one of our games early because it got too dark, which was frustrating and disappointing for everyone involved. Having lights on the field would not only allow us to finish our games, but also give us more flexibility with practice schedules. We could practice after school and potentially even host evening games, which would be a great way to bring all teams to support, not just from the students, but the entire community. Having more student life would also hopefully draw attention to younger kids and inspire them to work hard so they can one day too play on a beautiful field. The ability to play and practice at night would make the field more usable and give us more time to develop as athletes. Lights would also help provide some equity for the fall sports. So while we're grateful for this synthetic turf field, I strongly encourage you to consider adding lights to this proposal. The combination of a turf field and lights would give our team and all of Hastings' athletes the resources and opportunities we deserve in order to succeed. It's a small addition that would make a huge difference for us as a community. Thank you for your time and your continued support of the Hastings softball program.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Julia Perrin. I live in Hastings and have three kids in the district, one in elementary school, one in middle school, and one in high school, and I don't recommend that. I, I want to share something with you, and it is the poster that my daughter, who is seven, made for the community banner that Rainbow Families, that Rainbow Families organized around Thanksgiving when we were targeted by these internet trolls, lips of TikTok. And so it reads, "It's not someone's gender that matters, it's their feelings." And let me explain what I think she means. Of course, gender identity matters deeply, especially for gender diverse and gender-questioning students. It profoundly shapes their sense of self and well-being. And I believe my daughter understands that. But what she really asks is this: "Why does gender matter so much to the other people, to these trolls? Why is it such a big deal? Why do we need to keep talking about it?" Without a doubt, it is a big deal in U.S. politics right now, in a tragic way. Trump's executive orders are laced with hateful rhetoric, not just dismissing transgender identities, but actively portraying transgender people as undeserving of legal rights. Transgender is front and center in the current administration's agenda. But for my second grader, gender identity isn't political. It is something that is much simpler. It is about empathy, and it's about kindness. People's feelings matter. Don't hurt others. Don't bully. Celebrate differences instead of pointing fingers at those who won't fit in. Every child deserves to feel accepted and respected and safe. These are core social-emotional values: respect, empathy, inclusion. And this is what Hillside has always taught. Since before we moved here, I have been admiring this, this emphasis on social-emotional learning here. And that's exactly what the gender lessons reinforce. The message on my daughter's poster shows that these lessons are working. That's why I question the necessity of a committee dedicated to differing opinions. What exactly about inclusion and acceptance needs to be reconsidered here? So, showing this to you one last time, I urge you, please don't lose sight of the moral standard you've set. Don't water down the values of respect and empathy that define this school and this school district. Keep hate out of the classroom. Continue acceptance, to teach acceptance for all kids, including gender-diverse students, and stay the course. This is not about politics. It's about the dignity and the well-being of real children in our schools. Because in the end, as my daughter's poster so simply states, "It's not someone's gender that matters, it's their feelings."
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zach B. Perrin, and I'm a junior at Hastings High School.
Speak into the mic, please.
As a queer student in Hastings-on-Hudson, I'd like to be able to say I have full faith in the administration's commitment to ensuring a safe and welcoming environment, not just for LGBTQ students, but for people of all identities. However, actions within this past year have raised my doubts. The formation of the K-12 Gender Committee has grown my fear over how the school's administration will work to combat attacks on the queer community by current President Donald J. Trump. This committee contains, quote, "representation with differing perspectives." Despite claiming to involve, despite claiming to involve diverse opinions on the matter, no students' voices have been included on this board. The implementation of empathy interviews is a solid start in involving student perspectives. However, it is nowhere near enough, and as this gives students only a recommending role in how this curriculum is created, if that. During a Board of Education meeting on January 22nd, a statement was made. "We're listening, we're not taking political stands, that's not our role as educators." While I agree with this statement, it is also true that the role of educators is to maintain a safe, inclusive environment for all students. According to the Trevor Project, 90% of all LGBTQ young people have said that their well-being has been negatively impacted due to recent politics, making politics something that must be taken into consideration by educators, as has the power to directly impact queer students' safety and well-being. School is meant to be a place where all students are able to feel safe, but the recent actions of this administration have not convinced me that this, that this safety will be ensured in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Amy Nichols. I'm the parent of a ninth grader and sixth grader who have attended Hastings schools since kindergarten, and I'd like to share my comments regarding gender education in the district. I've worked with trans and gender expansive youth and their families for many years and have provided education to young people and adults about gender diversity. Based on both my professional and personal experience, I strongly believe that children should be given the opportunity to understand and express their individual identities from the earliest ages, and that all children benefit from learning about gender diversity in our communities and our greater world, starting before kindergarten and continuing beyond graduation. I'm especially grateful to Hillside for spearheading this education with their thoughtful and impactful lessons. That being said, I've also made efforts to hear perspectives of those who have concerns about how and what young children are taught about gender. What I've learned through my conversations with people in this community is that we have much more in common than we may realize. We believe that no child should face discrimination or judgment for being who they are, that gender stereotyping and strict gender roles are limiting and should be challenged. Ultimately, we all share deep concerns for children's well-being and safety, and we want to protect children from being pressured to adopt identities that do not reflect their true selves. Aspects of gender can be quite complex, and I think I speak for most of us when I say that terms like transgender and non-binary were completely unknown to me for most of my life and flew in the phase of everything I thought I understood about gender. It makes sense to have questions, I still have plenty. I've found that when conversations are approached with true curiosity, compassion, and in good faith, they can be very productive. While I know some Hastings' parents with kids in the LGBTQ+ community or who are members themselves have also offered to have these conversations, that responsibility should not rest solely on them. As an ally, I would be very appreciative and eager to engage with anyone on these topics. I would also ask that anyone who raises questions and concerns publicly do so with sensitivity to the fact that the children and families affected face very real discrimination and dangers, especially at the present moment, as has been shared earlier. I would like to add that when it comes to district decision-making about curriculum, the perspectives of those with expertise and experience in gender diversity should be centered. There is an unfortunate amount of misinformation and misunderstanding about this topic, and we need to ensure that in this case, as with any subject, the experts are leading the way. I also want to express my support for Calendar B, the conclusive calendar that includes Eid and Diwali as full days off. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. Hi, my name is Juliette Ross. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a clinical psychologist and a mom. I'm wearing my psychologist hat right now, and I have three points I wanted to make. Excuse me. First, teaching, excuse me. All children about gender benefit cisgender students as well as their trans and non-binary classmates. Gender development is part of development for all people, whether we talk about it or pretend it isn't happening. When we teach children that gender is rigid, we limit their possibilities, such as when cis boys are disciplined for their behavior without being offered tools to manage their feelings, or when cis girls are offered fewer academic and extracurricular opportunities than their cis male peers. Presenting kids gender, presenting kids gender fluid, presenting gender as fluid benefits my cis daughter, who loves science, and my cis son, who loves musical theater. It benefits all of us individually and collectively to raise children who reach their fullest potential. Second, education that acknowledges gender identity certainly benefits LGBTQ students who are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their straight and cisgender peers. In-school access to what are called protective factors, such as learning about LGBTQ+ people, teachers respecting students' pronouns, and having access to gender-neutral bathrooms can reduce the suicide risk among trans and non-binary kids by 26%. Regardless of political perspectives, anything that has such a profound positive impact on pediatric mental health belongs in schools. 1.6% of Americans identify as trans or non-binary. In my clinical psychology practice, LGBTQ+ is not my area of specialty. Trans and non-binary adults nonetheless are overrepresented in my practice, as in other mental health settings. They have made up far more than 1.6% of my cases over the past almost 20 years. I have heard their firsthand accounts of rejection from their communities and sat with them during their bouts of suicidal ideation. Third is my hope that the next generation of trans and non-binary people who sit on my couch tell me about how they felt understood and accepted from an early age. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hey. As you know, I'm Lara. My pronouns are she/her and hers. These are crazy times. These are crazy times. Every day, a new surprise. It's destabilizing and confusing. Each of us is trying to make sense of what's happening and what will happen. For me, when I feel unmoored, I look to the things I know best and put my faith in. So when I thought about what you face as educators, I thought about the adages, "Knowledge is power, and those who do not learn from history are doomed to repeat it." And this came up for me again recently when my sophomore said to me, "Mom, I don't understand why there is so much pushback and talk about DEI stuff at school, because really, my class, my history class spent four weeks on the French Revolution and two days on the Holocaust. So it's not like we're overdoing it on DEI." There's this idea that LGBTQIA people are somehow new and an aberration- There's this idea that LGBTQIA people are somehow new and an aberration from the norm, but in fact, we have existed as long as there have been people and revered in many cultures. On January 30th, 1933, Hitler was inaugurated. Transgender people were officially recognized at the time and held government documents recording their gender markers. The Hitler regime quickly declared binary gender roles and heterosexuality the norm and proceeded to destroy identity cards and books pertaining to LGBTQIA folks and transgenderism in particular. On May 6th, 1933, they burned down the major institute in Germany devoted to LGBTQI research and transgender medical care. This should sound familiar. It's what has been orchestrated in the US the past few years and escalated in the past few weeks to disastrous consequence. In addition to the executive order about radical indoctrination in schools, you probably know that the CDC has been cleansed of all medical information having to do with transgender people. All government documents have lost the word transgender and often the other parts of the acronym. My friends who are public health researchers have no data to access. Autocratic regimes, and it's not even May yet! Autocratic regimes use gay and trans people as a kind of warning sign to scare many and give false assurance to others that make both fall into line. Trans people are canaries in the coal mines, so to speak, and then many other follow in their wake of destruction. As educators, as I know you know, you have a duty to protect students. This will not stop with gender identity lessons or use of pronouns. Students and parents are waiting to hear from you, as we have heard here today. Will you help keep us safe? Will you uphold New York State education law? Will you protect students of color, immigrant students, kids with disabilities, girls? We're talking not about some specialized thing that has to do with sex, we're talking about human rights and human lives. A diversity of perspectives on human rights, no place in a democracy. Please use your power while you have it. Speak up about the executive order. Those who do not learn from history are doomed to repeat it.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. Yeah, Laura Heiser-Mitten, she/her. I am very, very worried that with this gender inquiry committee, you have set the stage to dilute the gender lesson at Hillside. And if you do, you will be asking five- and six-year-olds to shoulder what you are now, perhaps, afraid to teach them. Our district was terrorized, and you feel traumatized, rightly so. You feel the weight of keeping your faculty safe. I know you want to do the right thing. Some of your response has been excellent, it's correct for the district to own the gender lesson, it's fantastic that you hope to expand it to K-12. Please also include lessons on misogyny and toxic masculinity while you're doing that. Gender is a wider topic than we always talk about. But is diluting at Hillside baked into this possible expansion? I ask, because the very fact of this inquiry committee is offensive from the outset. Our response to bullying cannot be that we immediately question if a lesson really is okay, if it's appropriate, not if you believed in it the day before the bullying, and we know that you did. So then, you gotta stick up for it the day after. No new science or data prompted this, fear did. And your committee with no outside experts, but with room for differing perspectives, you repeated that so many times. It's also a dangerous and slippery slope. Gender is the canary in the coal mine. You said at the last meeting, "We need to, quote, 'provide our faculty the space as it would be for any area, gender, chemistry, physics, to plan and design curriculum,'" but surely you don't gather faculty from across the building, from differing perspectives, to weigh in on chemistry, right? You said the original lesson was crafted by faculty, but actually, both gender spectrum and center lane were brought in as experts. Now do we just ask kindergarten teachers if they agree? We need everyone's buy-in first? We didn't need it the day before we were bullied! And those teachers are not the ones teaching the lesson! You said the committee will consider developmental readiness, that sounds a lot like age-appropriateness. And I worry that not everyone on your committee agrees that young trans kids exist. The AMA and APA agree they exist. I've heard it suggested that the lesson is too confusing for our youngest. I promise you, the way you teach second-grade math now, ten thousand times more confusing. No one is asking them to read Judith Butler, just learn a few new words and respect pronouns, but they can't grasp what a pronoun is! I know, that's the good thing they don't need to! I barely understand. The lesson is simply, if someone says to call them he, she, or they, please do that. The Hillsideers are really great at this. Gender is not sex or attraction, no one is teaching about body parts. You assured us at this last meeting, the committee shares the same outcome, to affirm, dignify, and respect all students, great. But that language allows for a pretty open interpretation, I do not feel assured. I don't care if some teacher thinks it's not appropriate. I don't care if they believe in evolution, those are feelings, they get to have them, but they should play no role in curriculum, just like chemistry and physics. If you stop teaching these words, transgender, cisgender, and non-binary, beginning at kindergarten, here is your outcome. There will still be trans and non-binary five- and six-year-olds at Hillside. They will be forced to teach their peers themselves, and they will be laughed at and bullied, and this is important, not believed, because that is what happened before. It is great, but it is not enough to teach kindness and all colors belong to everyone. Anyone who has a child who appears different knows this. We must give them language to understand the world around them. We, the adults in the room, must normalize what different is, or it will be on our shoulders, finally, at last, when some of our kids can't make it through.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi. Andy Mitten, Hillside parent, Hastings resident. Children in our schools, kids we've been sworn to protect, feel the ground shifting under them. They hear elected officials openly mock their identities on the floor of Congress. They see their existence debated in television ads and hearings on our local Facebook groups. And now here we are doing it, in this room. So the annual thirty-minute gender lesson at Hillside is transparent and research-based. Parents are invited, right? Presentations are given, discussions are held. What is taught, age-appropriate vocabulary to help kids understand and respect each other. That's it, it's just basic human decency, it's zero to do with sexuality, zero. Anyone who claims otherwise is objectively and provably wrong. The clear consensus among every major medical and psychological body in the country is that gender understanding emerges early, remains stable, and support is crucial for healthy development. Critics can cite non-peer-reviewed reports or link to debunked theories, but, you know, what's funny is even ChatGPT and Elon's own Grok will tell you that the science is foundationally settled, because robots are still forced to admit facts, for now. For now. And that's all the information you should need. Forming a faculty committee of diverse perspectives to assess this lesson is plain wrong. Experience as educators qualifies exactly no one to build lessons requiring expertise in psychology and human development. Personal opinions, even well-meaning ones, can't replace evidence-based research. So yes, being a public servant means you have to hear every voice, but letting non-experts overrule established science, even giving them that chance, is absurd to me. Committees, reviews, panels, endless cycles of, "We just want to take another look." That's how people delay doing the right thing. That's how they avoid responsibility and the appearance of taking a side. And I'm surprised and disappointed it's happening here. The science hasn't budged, why should we? We stand firm, like many school officials already are, like Harrisonburg, Virginia Superintendent Michael Richards put it plainly in his statement. "We have a culture of respect, one that honors the dignity and diversity of all students, families, and educators. Using fear as a weapon to silence educators and divide communities is wrong. I will not be intimidated." And that's the kind of statement we need now. The stakes are immense, the stakes are our kids, they want to know what we stand for. I hope we are who we say we are. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to remind everybody, because there are a lot of speakers, please listen for the three-minute markers, we want to get everybody in efficiently. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Michelle Vivoda, and I have two children in the district, I live in Hastings. And I really wish I had prepared a proper speech, because there have been so many mic drops tonight that I feel really inadequate right now. First, I just want to say that I support the bond, and thank you to Melissa Samansky for so clearly explaining why simply fixing what's broken in our schools is not really going to be enough, and that we will decline without making enhancements to our instructional and extracurricular space. But I'm here tonight to speak about the gender inclusivity lessons as an ally of Hastings' Rainbow Families, and I also just want to say that as I was out the door tonight, I told my eighth grader that I was going to the Board of Ed Meeting to speak in support of the gender inclusivity lessons, and she gave me a thumbs up. So the kids are doing okay with the curriculum. I want to encourage the Board and district leadership to resist the impulse to curtail programming that teaches children to respect their differences, including differences in gender identity and expression. Teaching kindness and inclusion is not indoctrination. We need to stay grounded in our core values and principles, and as others have said tonight, this won't end with gender diversity, what will be next? I also do think, and I heard Amy Nichols talk about this a little bit, I think the Board and district leadership may have a role in helping the community members who may question, wonder about, or challenge the gender inclusion lessons, helping the community better understand what happens in these lessons and why they are so important. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, I don't believe that everyone who questions what's happening in these lessons necessarily has bad intentions, and I think this body's role should include educating the community about its importance. I do have concerns about the faculty of diverse perspectives. I'm wondering what the diverse perspectives are, and if they're not grounded in the evidence, then why do they get to be at the table? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi there, I'm Libby Copeland, I have a middle schooler and high schooler, and just wanted to speak briefly. So I think one of the, I've been so impressed by the gender lessons since they came out, and I just wanted to say a big thank you to Hillside and Amy Casey's, because from the beginning, I've been bowled over by her leadership over this and by the administration, everything about it, how they came through, how they were rolled out, how parents were educated about them. And I think one of the reasons that they are so important is they take this heavy burden off the shoulders of the kids, who otherwise would have to carry it, the young kids, the five- and six-year-olds, who would have to basically keep explaining themselves over and over to their peers. It's this burden of being constantly made to feel different and strange and other, not because other five- and six-year-olds are cruel, but because they simply don't understand, they don't have the language. And the beauty of this half-hour lesson once a year is the gift of that understanding, right? The teachers are giving them a framework for understanding how a trans child or a non-binary child or a questioning child is experiencing themselves and experiencing the world. And if you speak to the parents of trans and non-binary kids in this district, you come to understand how beneficial and supportive such teachings have already been, just in the few years that we've had this curriculum in Hillside. So it is really worrying to me that we might consider altering and watering down the effectiveness of this curriculum, given that it was well-vetted, given that it was rigorously put together, given that it's been successful and supportive for our kids, especially at this moment in time, and all because, as far as I can tell, we became the target of bullies on social media who intentionally and grossly misrepresented our curriculum. This is the moment, I think, for Hastings to lead. This is the moment when we can and must lead. I don't think we need to be rolling over from bullies now. That's not who we are. I think this is the moment when we do the right thing. We stand up for the kids, because that's who we are. We stand up for all the kids. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, good evening. My name's Mia Johnson, and I am the proud mother of a transgender young woman who attended all three schools and graduated from the high school in 2022. This is, I don't really need to say how scary a time this is, when you are a parent of a transgender child, even one who's going to be twenty-one. It's terrifying how hopeless and scary it is, how powerless you feel, how you worry every day about their safety, and you feel like there's nothing that you can do. But there one thing that I did want to do was, I wanted to come and I wanted to stand up for the students and for the LGBTQ community, and speak in support of the gender inclusivity curriculum. As I mentioned, my daughter graduated in 2022 and came out in 2019, her sophomore year. There was no curriculum when she attended Hillside. I can say without a doubt that she was trans when she attended Hillside. We just didn't have the language or the understanding. When she first tried to come out to me, when she was at the middle school, I didn't reject her, but I did basically the second worst thing you can do, is I pushed it. I said, "Oh, well, that's really interesting, let's talk about that, but just not right now," because I didn't have the language and I didn't have the comprehension. So while she finally made her way, and she did come out, and she was warmly supported by the school, and every, her name was, they accepted her new name and her pronouns, and there was never an issue, I just can't help but thinking, why did she have to go through all of those years throughout middle school of feeling alone and that there was something wrong with her, and that it was so confusing, and for me, as a parent, thinking there was something going on, but not really sure how to address it, and just, if she had had that curriculum, maybe she would have come out when she was at Hillside, because I know she was trans, like she's always been trans. So I just really urge you to please listen to this incredibly dynamic, articulate community. Trust the science, trust the experts, and please don't dilute the curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, I, I'm gonna make sure I'm not going... This'll help me. Hi, good evening, my name is Maria Grisepa. I stand here with unwavering support of the Hastings Rainbow Families. I am critical of the gender lesson in that it's thirty minutes once a year, please expand it. I have seven hours worth of, whoops, seven hours worth of support that I could lend. However, first of all, many other people have done it better than me, and secondly, since Hillside classrooms are still steeped in balanced literacy, that's where I have to pivot. You are probably sick of seeing me, and I'm not really thrilled about talking about it, but we're still here. Melissa, I love that you just said, you're either getting better or you're getting worse. Yes. So in 2017, Hillside very formally adopted balanced literacy as the ELA model proposed by Gravity Goldberg. We have worked with them ever since, except maybe only a tiny bit this year. So yes, now we- with them ever since, except maybe only a tiny bit this year. So yes, now we do layer on top phonics, that's the direct instruction, but that's unmistakably the side dish of balanced literacy. We have not had any curriculum review. So balanced literacy came in 2017, and then we added phonics on top. It plays out very differently classroom to classroom. Three cuing, that's the guessing methods, that harms children. And my son is a prime example. As a reminder, the guessing methods, the three cuing, it harms the children who are predisposed to reading difficulties. They're the ones who have the most harm because they're the ones who are most thrilled by the opportunity to use picture power and try and lie in. And as a quick refresher, picture power is when you use the illustration to guess the unknown word. Try and lie in is when you guess a word that makes sense in context. I'm thousands of dollars deep on doing this with my son and trying to prevent it with my daughter. So three RFPs for ELA PD have gone out, July, October, November. To the best of my knowledge, no ELA PD contracts have been signed. As recently as the fall, the BOE, you received a recommendation to continue with and their balanced literacy model. Alex talked about Louisiana. Even they're doing science of reading since 2021. How are we behind Louisiana? Come on, guys. Where is the urgency? Please, join me. I'm very urgent because I also have a three-year-old and I'm running out of tutoring money. So Aubrey de Grey said, don't cling to a mistake just because you spent a lot of time making it. We don't have to keep doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Robert Gentman, 3 Bevris Street. While I'm not here to speak, I want to say that I'm in full support of the kindness displayed by the Hastings Rainbow Families. I am the president and founder of the HHS Student Athlete Committee, a committee that has raised over $15,000 for school athletics since September. I want to voice our committee's full support of this bond on all aspects of turf. All athletes within the group have a positive attitude towards turf and supportive. This bond will absolutely benefit Hastings athletes at all levels, the town's youth, and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, hi, everybody. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for being here. The truth is, I'd rather be home in my slippers watching TV than debating somehow whether transgender and non-binary people exist. I understand that a small but very loud group of people who are misinformed have decided that gender lessons in this school are somehow a threat to our children. So the district, instead of standing firm, decided to consult a group of diverse voices on these lessons. And this is just code. These are people with no knowledge of queer issues. These are people with no lived experiences as transgender or non-binary weighing in. It's preposterous. It's spineless. And frankly shameful. What are we doing next? Are we inviting people who believe Earth is flat to help design the geography curriculum? Or creationists to weigh in on the biology curriculum? As I said, there's a group of people who feel that these lessons are harmless to our children. And I want to remind you that feelings are not facts. The only fact I see here is that there are children in our schools who are non-binary and transgender. Delaying or canceling these lessons that help them feel seen and safe is irresponsible. And ignoring their existence will make them disappear. In the current climate of our country, the district should be doubling down on the DEI efforts, not reviewing lessons that have been in place for years. Dr. McCarthy, education is not about appeasing. Education is about preparing students for the world as it is, not as a few bigoted voices wish it were. So I urge you to toughen up, stop worrying about a few people who are uncomfortable with reality and start caring for the well-being of our children. And I want to remind you that history has shown repeatedly that those who are against DEI efforts are never the good guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, I'm Brian Harris. Pronouns are he/him. I am a psychotherapist, a faculty member at NYU, editor of a book on mental health and the LGBTQAI+ community. I'm the father of a seven-year-old child at Hillside. And I'm also the son of a mother who died by suicide. Both personally and professionally, I've spent much of my life focused on suicide and suicide prevention. When we talk about supporting our most vulnerable children and teens, we need to be clear about what's at stake. A 2023 CDC study found that 52% of transgender students seriously considered suicide. That's over half. 52% seriously considered suicide. 26% attempted suicide in the last year. Over a quarter of transgender students attempted suicide in the last year. These numbers are more than four times higher than those of their cisgender peers. But the research also shows that these rates drop significantly when students perceive their schools as gender-affirming. This is not an abstract debate. It's a matter of life and death. You have the power to save lives. Our transgender, non-binary, and gender nonconforming students are watching what you decide. I urge you to consider the true implications of inviting a diverse range of perspectives on whether our school acknowledges the identities of our most vulnerable students. While I hope this was not the intent, this framing suggests that erasing the identities, denying their personhood, and increasing their suicide risk are perspectives worth debating. This is not diversity, it's harm. Last month, when anti-trans bullies launched their attacks on our community, I imagine many of you felt afraid and unsafe in the face of their threats. I can only assume that the decision to create a committee to review gender lessons was driven by that fear. But if simply allowing transgender identities to be acknowledged in school made you feel unsafe, imagine what it's like to live every day as a trans or gender nonconforming person, to have your existence debated, challenged, or erased. I urge you to reaffirm your unwavering support of our most vulnerable students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi all, my name is Katie Friedman. My pronouns are she/her. And I had the privilege of growing up in Hastings from 1990 to 2008. And I moved back with my husband and toddler two years ago. This is my first Board of Ed meeting, and thank you for having me. One of the main reasons I moved back to Hastings is because Hastings is and should continue to be a place where kids feel supported and safe in being themselves. As an ally, I support the gender and inclusivity lessons to help provide an opportunity for children to strengthen their understanding, empathy, acceptance, and confidence in their own and their peers' identities. Now especially is the time for us all to lead with morality, humanity, and courage. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Arthi Motukrishnan, 160 High Street. First of all, I want to acknowledge and support the gender curriculum happening in Hillside right now. I think I was the first school, one of the first cohorts of families that went through it during the pandemic. And it was enlightening for me as an adult, and I didn't, my kindergartner at that time, or actually first grader, didn't even bat an eye. It was a non-event, so we should continue with that. Second, I want to express my support for Calendar B. We have been talking about celebrating multiple identities here today. This is along the same vein. I think this calendar is the most inclusive calendar Hastings has ever put forward. It puts us on par with Adzeli and Scarsdale, both affluent communities right next to us with strong academic outcomes. So I want, I know this can be done. I also want to remind us that we did a survey amongst our community last year, and there was wholehearted support for an inclusive calendar. I think 83% of the respondents supported an inclusive calendar. That survey also showed that 6% of our community felt like their culture and religious holidays were not acknowledged in the current calendar. That's the same amount of people that identify as Asians according to the census. So Diwali, Eid, these are Asian, predominantly Asian holidays. Currently, we celebrate all the federally and state-mandated holidays, and we have a discretion on the other cultural holidays. Let's make sure that all our community members are seen. I understand that two weeks off is important. It's important for me. I have family in India. Both sets of grandparents are there. Every time we travel, we take extra days off to go. Two weeks means a lot for us, too. But even though that two weeks gives us the flexibility to travel, I still want my day off so that my kids can feel seen just like everybody else. That's all for now, but I also wanted to add one more sidebar note regarding the turf. We are planning a community forum as part of the Conservation Commission on February 26th, wherein we are inviting the community to come and hear about the alternatives to plastic turf. So I hope all of you and other members can come for that event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Elizabeth Adenalty, 58, Ballard. We're going to put the idea of tolerance to a test right now. Because I'm going to speak up because I'm tired of being cowed by people who think I'm a misguided individual who doesn't fit with the culture of Hastings because I do not believe in teaching elementary-age students the concept of gender identity. This does not mean I believe in rigid sex stereotypes, quite the contrary. As far as being a part of Hastings' culture, I am a lifelong progressive atheist feminist Democrat. Since moving here, and especially during the pandemic, I spent hundreds of hours and tens of thousands of dollars out of my own pocket, making sure our food pantry was fully stocked so members of this community did not have to worry about whether they could feed themselves and their families. When swastikas and white supremacist posters appeared throughout the village in 2017, I was one of the organizers of rallies and community events held in response, one of which was held on this day eight years ago. Eight years ago, I stood up and spoke up, and tonight I am doing it again. I'm tired of hearing that I do not belong in Hastings because I find the ideas the district is teaching our children about gender and gender identity to be reductively misogynistic, homophobic, logically inconsistent and incoherent, and to be beliefs that are contrary to many people's understanding about the development of self and identity. We've heard a lot of talk about listening to experts. Well, in the district's materials that are go out to parents, there are many references to the organization Glisten. Glisten has created an elementary school curriculum, which was put together by top experts. And it's not like what the district cobbled together with Gender Spectrum. I don't know why they're considered experts. The Glisten curriculum emphasizes defying rigid gender stereotypes and acceptance of gender nonconformity in oneself and others. If the district was using this curriculum, I would be 100% supportive, as with many of the other parents I've spoken to who don't agree with this curriculum but don't have the courage to stand up in front of a group of people like this and say that they don't agree with it. I hope that it will give serious consideration to replacing the existing curriculum with Glisten's. I don't know how anyone can object to the organization that is dedicated to creating safe schools for children of different gender identities and expressions, that their curriculum is somehow not sufficient. The Gender Facts that the district gives to parents says that the goal of our lessons is to help all students understand their own identity, to teach all students to be respectful of all identities. That last part I agree with, but on a fundamental level, I do not think it is the district's place to help students understand their gender identity. As a parent, I don't want this concept taught to my children, any more than I want them taught that they have a soul or that God is real. These are beliefs about existential ideas. It is inappropriate for public schools to encourage children, especially in elementary school, to think about their gender identity, the same way it would be to ask them to think about whether they believe in God and what their religious identity is. We teach children in public schools to expect other students' religious beliefs without telling them they have to accept those beliefs or that they even have to have religious beliefs of their own. But when it comes to gender identity, the district is not teaching children to be accepting of people with different beliefs. It is teaching there's only one right way to think or believe, that everyone has a gender identity. Our gender facts confusingly tell children that gender expression is how you express your gender. It could be your clothes, your hair, how you walk or talk. But then it also says that all colors, hobbies, careers, games are for everybody.
Thank you.
But you can't tell children in one breath that these things are how they can express their gender identity, and then they don't belong to any particular gender. We tell children that they have to, that they're expressing their gender, but then we also say you can't know what someone's gender is unless they tell you. These ideas cannot coexist with one another. The district has become an echo chamber where dissenting views are not heard or respected. Many people can accept the idea that there are individuals who find relief from distress by believing as members of the opposite sex.
Please respect the time limit.
Other people have not. Many people are agreeing that there is discrimination, that there is violence against us. But it's different than saying that everyone is, with their wife and baby, accepts the idea that gender identity is real, that everyone has a gender identity, that these ideas should be taught to our children. And if you don't agree that they should be taught, you break the law of express.
Hello.
I wasn't going to speak because there are so many incredible speakers in this room. And I was just going to say a little something, but I have to follow that, and that's a lot to follow. And I would love to read that. And I would love to read what you wrote and hear all of it. And I'm the mother of a transgender child who is a graduate of this school and is doing great in college. And I really appreciate all the support that he got when he was here at this school. And wow. So I was going to say something really snarky, like I think it's absolutely fantastic to have this gathering together to do inquiry-based learning and, you know, have people be able to talk, because I think that's what's most important. Oh, so my snarky part was that you could start the meeting off and you could show them the video of this medium. So, you know, but that's not so funny, right? So, what should I say? What do I want to say? I just want to say, yeah, I, I think that we need to continue talking. I'm so happy that this experience happened to bring everybody together, to reaffirm what we believe as a community, and to remind our educators, you know, what they believe. And, um, again, I didn't have anything prepared, but I, I just want to say that we need to keep talking with each other, and we need to keep listening, and we need to keep respecting each other. And, um, and what is this? Is it, I'm not fully versed, so it's a diverse group that's supposed to come and talk about the curriculum? And I think that's a great idea, and I think that there shouldn't be just one perspective of diversity. I think there should be a wide perspective of diversity us sitting at this table, having this conversation. And I think curriculum, I've reported on education for a decade with PBS NewsHour, and I think curriculum, yes, should, should be reviewed periodically. But let's not kid ourselves what's, what's going on here, right? Come on, Melissa. You know, so, so if you're going to do this, do it the right way, please. If you want to talk about this curriculum with people who don't understand it, who don't believe it, who have different thoughts about it, that's cool. But it's not going to be one group of people with diverse perspectives.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we can't direct comments at one particular person, please? Thank you.
Sorry, I don't know the rules, sorry. So if whoever's organizing this meeting, you know, that's, I think, my time, right? Okay, so let's, if, if you're going to have, bring people to the table to talk about this, please do it the right way and not have a small group of people like making a decision on what, on what this direction goes. And, and we need to keep this curriculum intact with no dilution.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, let's expand it.
Thank you. Thank you all, thank you very much.
Yeah, for sure.
Usually, public comment doesn't warrant a response, but I take quite seriously everything that's been said. On December fourth, I made a public comment, and it's in the record publicly. That was within a week of us being under attack across the nation. And I took a very strong stand, and I urge you to all see it. The final point out of eleven was it's not if we continue, it's how we continue our work on gender. I was committing deeply to, as superintendent, backed up by the commissioner, who I spoke to before, because there's no other superintendent out of some six hundred-plus districts in this state who has had to be, thanks to the work ahead of me, to have the gender work in Hillside, who's had to have the onslaught from the awful people you all referred to. So my commitment on the fourth, in writing, and I'm glad it's there, it's in the board record, please go see it, speaks to, and I hope assures nearly everyone here that our commitment is to continue with gender work, to deepen the work, to bring it to the district level. It's not been at the district level. The superintendent has not stood here proud of me and say, we're going to work on gender district-wide. Bring it K-12, take the pressure off of Hillside, to deepen and further that work so that we actually do that much better for all our students. Now, actually, given what I said earlier about my concerns about federal action, we actually have a bigger opportunity right now. Because in the last three, four days, the commission's reiterated, as I said earlier, our framework is in your policy and legal, is in your state framework. Then it's the local board. Go back, please, and read the statement on the fourth. For whatever reason, many may not have seen it, but it's in the public record purposely within one week after we were hit with all of this. This idea of a committee is to first let our faculty know that we're continuing the gender work. We're not backing down or balking, backing off. But I spent a career working with faculty since nineteen eighty-one in a remarkable range of schools. And when the faculty is hit, some meeting police presence, some meeting guidance back to their homes because of what was put in that social media. I needed to say, as a faculty, have that space, that moment, just for you as faculty, to recommit to the work, share, understand what it means to be strong and deep on gender, the dignity and respect for everyone, that's in my statement. But that meant the faculty needed some time within those strong parameters. It's not about getting rid of gender work, it's about deepening and securing it and then making sure the faculty have an understanding. And yes, then reaching out to students. Yes, then reaching out to families, thinking about the range of experts we have. But to continue that work and to get it done such that the gender lessons we've had can continue. We had a slight delay due to the loss of a very important person in our community. We delayed because of that. And what's going to be efficient, but let me, again, go look at the fourth. December fourth, it's in there. My writing matters. Every word I put on a piece of paper matters. And again, it's not if we continue, it's how we continue and to deepen it. Final comment, maybe a little controversial. We have to be able to listen to people who have a different point of view. That is not going on in Washington right now. So we cannot be saying, don't let me listen to other people, and then be upset about things that are coming down the path. We have to be open to different points of view, but here, here are the guardrails. It's about gender work, deepening, strengthening, K-12, which we've not been doing. But to do that so we hear all voices, all perspectives, to make it that much stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You know, if I can, well, actually, I'm going to open up for any comments first. Just want to share, you know, this, so much of what's going on these days here in this country. It reminds me, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I was looking through, I do from time to time, the Hastings on Hudson yearbooks from long ago. And I was actually looking at nineteen forty-four, and it was, it was, I mean, yeah. And it was remarkable to read through that. And, you know, there were kids that were taking aircraft identification, you know, classes because they didn't know, they didn't know the war was going to end. They didn't know what role they were going to have. There were many students who left school to enlist before they graduated. And, you know, on the, on the pages, there were little stories people told. There was a different story for each month of the year, and they were celebrating the fact that Hastings had been very cautious in nineteen forty-four and had been the last community to turn the lights back on because there was a, some sort of like no light policy so that they wouldn't be bombed. And they were, they were celebrating that. And what struck me is that the reason people lived in places like this is because of the community. And all this stuff, all this incredibly crazy stuff could happen outside, in the outside world, but they could depend on each other. And that's the thing that comes through so loud and clear in those pages. And so I just want to say, you know, my four years on the board, with working with so many other trustees and people from the community, I'm, no matter what happens, I'm very heartened that that's the perspective that we all have. All see the value in a small community. In particular with the school, we all see it as the heart and a home for the students that are here. And everything that, amongst my colleagues and the people that I work with in the school, and again, in the community, gives me a sense that, that that's something that we can all count on, no matter what happens. So I just wanted to share that anecdote, so thank you. Moving on to business items. Are there any questions or comments regarding business items one through fifteen?
I just wanted to make a comment on business item number fourteen. And I just wanted to extend my thanks for the funding that we're receiving from the Edith Winthrop Teacher Center to offset those costs because the costs for the professional development in the science realm are not inconsiderable. And so the fact that a lot of that is offset by that grant is much appreciated. So thanks for the ability to be able to continue that work. I would say that our science department is already top-notch, but everybody can get better. And so the fact that we are committing that, that amount of money to several days of professional development is very heartening. And again, we appreciate when we can have somebody else pay for it. So thanks.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Thank you. I too appreciate that they accepted our grant for this very important work. We have some newer faculty members in the science department. We have work to do, and I, I second what you said, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for calling that out. Are there any other questions or comments regarding business items one through fifteen?
I guess a, a general comment on, if you could put kind of the total amount that we're approving in each document, that would be helpful because it kind of words differently, some are a range, and you have to kind of read through it to, to do the math and, and figure out the total calculation. So I did have a question on item twelve. What, it's a hundred and fifty dollars for each thirty minutes. Can you give me a sense of what the total is for that?
So those contracts are really just to make up missed sessions. So typically, I mean, it's not necessarily capped, but historically, it wouldn't be more than ten or fifteen thousand dollars a year. So this is, we have our own folks who do these speech and language services, but then if there's either students that could be out of district or a misservice or something of that nature. So many times, we'll enter into contracts just to ensure that we're in compliance so if there's any misservice. So this is the rate in which they receive. But typically, it wouldn't be more than ten thousand dollars because it would just simply be for, to ensure that if any service was missed, it was made up by this contract.
Thank you. And a question on the mold, number thirteen, the, that was a third party that had to be involved, right?
Yeah, so again, these are expenses that we're approving and will pay for directly, but then we'll recoup it through the insurance claim as part of the work.
Thank you. And then just, I guess, a general comment or question on curriculum and sort of competition? I'm assuming kind of the, the limits apply. If there's a, a dollar limit for the competitive versus lower amounts, right? And how you, could you just give a little background on that for those who might not be familiar?
So we, we work with the board policy on it. And so in terms of any amount that is projected to exceed that threshold, we would issue an RFP, and then we would accept bids on that and review them. Ninety-nine, nine-nine percent of that time, that's done within the context of a committee or multiple eyes on something, and then we go from there. We need to make sure that, you know, in terms of the pricing, yes, we want competitive pricing, yes, we want to make sure we aim to go with, you know, really the lower cost. However, we won't do that at the expense of expertise or what we're looking for.
Thank you. Because you're not required to accept the lowest bid, but you're required over a certain threshold to bid it, right?
Ah, thanks.
Thank you, that's all.
Any other questions?
Can you just tell me how much time, number four, the master scheduling with Jeanette Coker is going to take? It, it did, it did explain how many hours it's for? I was just wondering over what amount of time that's meant to transpire. And I'm also asking that question just in the context of, you know, kind of talking about the bond and, you know, scheduling being such an important part of the space that we need and how that, like programmatically, so if you could speak to that or kind of expand on.
I, I know in the, well, I mean, it was, we do, but in the, in the quote, it does say a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five hours.
I was just meaning like, when is that going to happen?
When is that happening?
And, and for what period is that master scheduling supposed to, is this to cover for next year's?
It's starting already now coming because we're talking about things within the context of the budget.
So this is for work in progress?
No, this is work, work that's about to begin.
Okay.
But we haven't started with the scheduling.
Right. And when is that?
I, I think also be, I mean, partly the reason she's being brought in is with Lori being new and so many new folks, it was also to, like, assist them with, you know, the process throughout it. So I think that she would, I think it is like right around now they'd be starting to build the schedule for next year.
So since Mrs. Coker has already been our Director of Hudson Counseling for some time and has since retired, is she then in the process of doing this with the hours that we're approving? Is she then educating whoever will be then taking over this process? I'm just wondering how that kind of torch gets passed so that obviously, once these a hundred hours are.
Yeah, so prior to Jeanette retiring and, and her final day, she was interacting probably a good several times, like ten, maybe eight or nine times with Lori before Lori came here just for general orientation. And the feeling on this was then, given mid-year transition, which is not ideal, especially in such a key scheduling job, just to provide some support around Lori during that. So Lori's definitely encourages this as sort of, as an up to, as all the different stages might be involved. But I actually think, these are great questions, and also, if we didn't have this right now, we're trying to go cold turkey with a brand-new Director of Counseling during all this scheduling, plus the need to begin to look with a little more clarity at how we have done scheduling. And I've had that conversation with Jeanette. You know, she understands that going forward, we may do things a little bit differently. So this isn't, this is a, just, it's really as much mid-year transition and such a key position for scheduling as Hastings has done this. How do we support that work and then bridge, you know, to the next phase? Because you have experienced a brand-new high school principal, experienced a brand-new high school assistant principal, also just starting, and then you have a brand-new Director of Counseling starting right now. We needed to provide some support for that.
Okay, that makes sense. I just wanted to understand how much of it was a bridge and how much of it is like laying the foundation for work that is going to be coming up and might be pivotal to our bond work down the line, all of those kinds of things, and how those interface. So that was the context of my question.
To put it simply, we, this is about teaching someone to fish, but not solely the Hastings way, don't get locked into that. We want new thinking and approaches. But, but if we're not savvy on, right now, in the middle of the year, students are wanting their courses and how we've done that, you know, to, to have that support.
Right, okay, thank you.
I actually had similar questions, so I'm glad you raised it. And I, and one of the things I, I'm excited about our new leaders from different places. And I know oftentimes, the assistant principal is also involved in scheduling and master scheduling, and just making sure that that is, is really thought about across the middle school and the high school with both of them giving sort of a fair voice and place and space in that. Because I know that, I feel like often it feels like the high school leads the way and just making sure that, that both parties are fully in place.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, business items? I'll just note very quickly that it's super exciting that the middle schoolers are doing Mamma Mia! For their musical, I can't wait to see that, believe me. I saw, I saw that you came out.
And Ella's going to be in it.
Oh, yeah? I mean, that's a great show. I like that. Is there a motion to approve business items one through fifteen?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Placement services for CSC.
I'm going to urge us to move along because there are people, I, I know we still have things to do, but there are people who have to drive distances.
Start to snore, actually?
Supposed to snort around the bend.
Okay, no, for sure.
So let's be mindful.
Of course, good point. Are there any questions or comments about services and placement for CSC and CPSC? Is there a motion to approve our placement services for CSC and CPSC?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Moving on to personnel as a consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments regarding our personnel? Is there a motion to approve our personnel consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Committee reports on policy. Is there anybody who would like to give a little bit of background? Or is it, is it needed? Was there anything substantive or?
Yeah, the main item, I don't know if Sylvia wants to speak to it or Dave.
Well, I mean, I think the main one that we were.
The student liaison.
Right, I think that we were intending with our liaisons to be present, to be able to discuss how the selection process for the student liaison to the board would be moving forward in its new iteration. And I would say that the highlight is essentially that the selection process would include candidates for the position being interviewed by the current liaisons, the student union president, four representatives from the student union, one from each high school class, and then the student advisor. So that's a gauntlet of eight people, that's a lot. And it's quite different from, I think, previously, those people essentially being chosen by the current liaisons with some input from the student, the, I'm sorry, the faculty advisor. So that group of people will interview the candidates, and then they give a recommendation to the high school principal, which they then act upon. I mean, that's like the cheap and dirty, so you can fill it in.
And I can, and I can update you. Mr. Kleiman and I met with Ella and Kai about this last week in advance of the meeting. They're actually, they are supportive of this. They understand the reason for the change. They understand that now that this is a mandated policy and law, that, and that we had to have a legal review. And one place of the legal review, which coincided with the two board members' review, was around the selection process and came up with one. And Mr. Kleiman's memo, if you had a chance to read it, I think really hits the nail on the head. And Mr. Kleiman's memo, if you had a chance to read it, I think really hits the nail on the head in the opening paragraph, which is, which really resonated with Kai and Ella, that we are holding on very much, if the board agrees, to this as a student-centered, student-driven process, but then broadening out that so it's that much more, uh, defensible to any good questions. When I arrived here, coincidentally, we had three new board members, and a few of the new board members raised, uh, questions about the selection process for this. They wanted to, you know, make sure that it was as inclusive as possible. Um, so I, I feel confident that if Ella and Kai were here, they would be ahead of me saying anything, saying, "We, we've heard about this, we've studied it, we've looked at it, uh, we feel good about it." Uh, and indeed, in the meeting they had with Mr. Kleiman and myself, it was more than logistical, it was more about logistical questions, timing, how to manage, uh, number of applicants, et cetera.
And I will say that, well, we often talk about Hastings being the leader. We really are in this realm because we've had, like, a student liaison to our board since, like, two thousand and three, two thousand and four. And having sat with other board, uh, presidents and vice presidents within the last couple of weeks are like, "How did you guys do it?" Like, there, people are very, like, nervous and anxious because that's not a norm in their district. So I think that we really, yeah, no one else has it. So they really, the fact that we've been, we've had, you know, talented students who have given us insights to their perspectives is actually quite, you know, a gift.
Well said, well said. Uh, it's just a first read, these policies, so we will see them again before voting on them. Are there any questions or comments about the four policies that are listed here? I'm sorry, five policies. Oh, no, four.
I have a question on the policy committee, and I didn't raise this question, I don't know why, um, regarding the timeout. I know that we talked in there, there's rules about, like, not rules, but, uh, you have to collect data on the amount of time that kids are out, and we report that. So I guess I have two questions. One is, um, what does the data show on how many, how much kids are out of classroom during timeouts, right? And the difference between students with IEPs and not IEPs? Um, so are they losing a lot of instructional time? And in the, my second question or just comment is, what happens when that extended period of time leads to, like, a large loss of instruction? I don't see anything in the policy that talks about, like, regaining the lost instruction that might happen if they're out of class for, um, two hours because they, they haven't been de-escalated yet.
I can look into this further with our special ed department. Typically, that is not a norm for us in terms of students having to, to go to a timeout room, so to speak. I'm aware in my time in Hastings, in about six years, of one case where the data tracking was really necessary. Um, but let me do a little bit more homework to make sure that I'm not misrepresenting. Usually when something is coming up like that, we really do some heavy involvement, you know, in terms of cross-departments, cross-building, uh, and it's almost always on my radar. Um, but I can, let me follow up with the special ed department.
And just one more comment. There is a training for the adults that, um, are the de-escalators?
Yes.
For the timeout. What does that training consist of and?
It's a formal CPI training. It's crisis prevention and intervention. It's facilitated by our, uh, director and one of our assistant directors of special education, both of whom have been formally trained to lead that training. And we have a tiered approach so that some people are receiving full training, which is, you know, there's full day and it's verbal de-escalation plus a physical de-escalation. And other people get refresher so that they remain on, on top of certain things. And then we actually go above in Hastings where we provide verbal de-escalation training to people who don't necessarily have to, um, draw from that skill set on a daily basis, but we just feel like it's good practice and good culture to have more people trained than less. So it's actually one of the offerings on our, uh, March Superintendent's Con- Conference Day. And so we have TAs and aides, there's a tracking system to make sure who's trained. We have new administrators that will be invited to the training this time. And we will be taking a tiered approach. I actually just met with the Professional Learning Committee today on this. Some people will be concurrently running a full day for people who need a recertification and will also lead a half-day for de-escalation. And that will include people who don't even directly work with children just because it's a very good skill set to have, emotional regulation.
Thank you. I, I think de-escalation training is one of the most important trainings that everyone should receive. And the fact that you're training, uh, teacher aides, right? Aides are the, the most important people to me that should receive this training because they are that person, that one-to-one with that student. If they can de-escalate them in that moment, right then and there, opposed to escalating them, right? I, I loved hearing that, thank you.
And all our lab members are trained too. I mean, we train probably some, like, sixteen to seventeen people. Most of them are also physically trained, they're certified in, like, the de-escalation.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Any other questions, comments regarding the policies? Again, it's just first read, so we'll see them again to vote on them next meeting. Uh, any questions or comments regarding our minutes? This would have been from the January twenty-second meeting. Is there a motion to approve our minutes from the January twenty-second meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Moving on to the adoption of the school calendar, again, we're considering two options before us, draft A, draft B. Putting up for questions, comments, positions?
And I want to thank Melissa D. for putting together quite a nifty.
We do have that slide.
You have that slide, I don't know if it's up or.
When you asked that.
It's online.
I don't know where it is, but.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the executive content in front of you. So, um, again, Melissa, you put this whole thing together, but you've got side-by-side the two calendars, A and B. And then at the bottom, you have a comparison chart across the area districts for the, the several areas that are most in question. It's incredibly clear and concise. Let me say one thing, I mean, you, you as a board, uh, the calendar is really, uh, something the board decides on. I respect that greatly. I can tell you all kinds of stories, which I won't, about that in other districts. I told you one earlier, uh, if you don't remember it, I'll tell you later. Um, but I think what's really important here is faculty and staff have come to me. Uh, and I actually take it in some respect and that there's some degree of trust built up, that they've come to me and said, "Please let the board know, we strongly prefer calendar A." We respect the thinking around calendar B, uh, we honor that and all the rest, uh, deeply. At the same time, very concerned about, uh, what would it mean to have that, that two days, that week, uh, not off for that, you know, winter break? Uh, and that's really something they're saying. For us as, as staff, we've been working really hard. We value, you know, having that time. So they, you know, it wasn't a survey, I'm just bringing.
I was going to say, what's, you know, I'm going to always ask the numbers, like, is it fifty percent, is it thirty percent? Like, what are the numbers here?
No, I'm going anecdotal, but, but when faculty and employees come to me and say, "Please raise it with the board," I feel I need to. So, uh, it was a couple of department chairs and all the rest. I mean, you, you can factor in how you wish, but I want you to know that.
It is noteworthy, though. It was really helpful when you have these comparisons that eleven out of the eighteen neighboring districts have that holiday recess that whereas the last day of school is twelve twenty-three and the holiday begins on twelve twenty-four. So if we did make that decision, we would not be in the minority. We would be actually with the majority of the districts shared with us here. Which is important to know, I think.
One logistical thing I think everybody should be aware of, you know, I think maybe, maybe we all are. Because of where Christmas falls and where New Year's falls, we have this, this couple-year run where we have two weeks off. But then it reverts for about five of the years to one week off. And that becomes a logistical difficulty. We have sort of extra days to move around when we have these long breaks, but when we have a short break, it's a, it's a very different calendar than.
So I actually prepared something that I sent to the board after. I've missed last week's meeting, I was, or last month's meeting because I was teaching, and I sent an email to the board that I wanted to share and put it in the public record because I think it's important because my voice was missed. Um, and I guess that in this discussion, I'm concerned that we are not discussing the portrait of the learner when we are making decisions. It is our district's north star. We have, as a community, created the portrait with input and buy-in from multiple community members, from faculty, from staff, from teachers, from students, everyone. And as we go forward, we need to look at the portrait, which talks about being bold, collaborative, empathetic, empowered, inquisitive and inventive. Under bold, it says we need to be constructive and risk-taking as necessary pathway for personal and academic growth and development. Under empathy, it says we need to seek to understand the experiences and vulnerabilities of others and foster sense of inclusion, equity and belonging in the local community and community at large. In inquisitive, it says we need to sustain sparks of curiosity, seeking to explore and interact with others and our world. If these, if these pillars are our north star, I guess I ask, why is this under debate? To me, calendar B, that is the most inclusive and speaks to all members of our community, is important to respect. And so as a board member, I ask that we all lead and make decisions based on the vision that our community and our school district set forth many years ago at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take, I'll respectfully take the other side of that. Um, something I mentioned at the other meeting was that, in general, I feel like there's too many days off anyway. Um, and I think it's particularly, you know, our calendar shows a hundred and eighty-two days listed. In reality, we take six snow days no matter what, putting us at the state minimum of one seventy-six. There's an additional fourteen days where the high schoolers don't go to school, covering the, uh, January regions and the June regions. And that puts us down at one sixty-two, which is actually, that's well below what would be a four-day week for the forty-three weeks of the school year. At one hundred and sixty-two days, you add in a couple of days the teachers are absent and they have subs. You add in the few days the typical student is, is absent themselves. The reality is, in the high school, with a schedule where classes happen every other day, a typical student is only going to sit in front of their teacher learning seventy to eighty times a year, which is less than two times a week. And to me, that's too little. And that doesn't, that's not singling out any holiday, but I just think in general, we have too many days off. The discontinuity of teaching is a real issue that I see as a, as a high school parent. And so for me, uh, under A, not agnostically, just because it has more days, um, it doesn't put us in a, in a situation where, in, you know, in other years, where we have to create singleton in-class days, where we take a week, let's say, for what would be the spring break, but we don't have the days because we've, we've budgeted them elsewhere, and so we have a day that kids are supposed to be in school. But kids won't be in school, lots of teachers won't be, and it's not a issue. Teachers will say, "I'm taking my leave for child."
It's a contractual issue.
No, no, but they have a right because they have child coverage issues, so they will be absent. And that, that's the reality. So to me, you know, I, I, I do agree that, you know, those choices make the calendar more inclusive. I do agree with the point Dave made, that's a sort of a small signal to the community. But I think the bigger onus on us is to educate the kids. And I think our core competency is to have them in school. And if we're not doing just that, I think that what Dr. McCursie has put forth to teach the kids about the holidays fulfills the obligation of the, of the portrait of Hastings' learner from my perspective. So for that sort of ball of reasons, I'm strongly in favor of, of, of draft A.
Alex, I, I do have a question about that. How do you decide then which holidays are included and not included?
Well, we follow.
Some of them are state-mandated.
No, I understand some are state.
No, no, so.
But those, there are many that aren't, and we've chosen to, so celebrate them. And for those many, and I think that's important. And I'm sure there was a conversation, I actually remember this back in the day when I was in school, about who should be included and who shouldn't. And those are judgment calls that we're making, and I just think we need to acknowledge. By saying we're not going to include those groups, there's a point in that.
No, no, but, no, no.
And, and those days off, those are two days, Alex. There are so many other days in our calendars that we can consider and think about. And the idea that we're going to say, "Oh, we're not going to teach the day before or after vacation." There are so many days that that could count to. You could even say that about Fridays. So I don't think that's a valid argument that we should lead with as a district that seeks to teach and learn our, to teach and learn our, our children and our faculty to be inclusive. If we have portraits of the learner and that's what our north star is, I don't understand how we can choose otherwise.
Fair enough, but one of the things I brought up, you were not at that meeting, was, and I, I meant, I looked for it, I could not find it, but what I'm, but I understand, what I remember seeing is, the way districts are supposed to, by state law, the way you're supposed to set, you cannot take a holiday for a religious observance because it's sort of mixing of first and state. What the state tells you to do is that you take a holiday for logistical reasons, unless the state, unless it's a state holiday. So the idea is that you, you, you take a holiday because you have a community that is observing a certain day and that logistically it creates difficulties and that you're taking it for the logistical reason. I'm not saying that that's the rubric we have to use in making those decisions, but what I am saying is when we're making choices that go the opposite way or we're creating logistical problems and difficulties, that is, you know, anathema to the spirit of the, the law that's given to us and the way we, with discretion we choose these holidays. So I, I see your point and I accept it, and I, and I understand that part of it is valid. I just feel that students need as much continuity as they can get, and I am loathe to create any issues this calendar or going forward where there's going to be increased discontinuity and also increased, uh, days off.
I would argue that that state law might not count here because the twenty-second and the twenty-third aren't public or religious holidays, and the other holiday, Eid and Diwali, are religious holidays. So I don't know how you can justify the twenty-second and the twenty-third because there is no significance to those dates.
No, what I would think, the state says that if you have, you know, you're going to have lots of teachers who would take that off themselves, not just take it off, but in their districts where they have kids, those kids are off. So logistic, you, you take it off for logistical reasons, you know, it's not that we're.
So I think that, it, to me, that raises an ethical issue regarding teachers, right? So what is the policy of the school district, if there is one, when a teacher calls out on a Friday before a holiday, just calls out sick? And what happens when a pattern occurs and you start noticing that? Is there policy on that? Do people get letters in their file? Is it accepted if someone calls out on these two days, right? So teachers base their holiday calendar based off the school's holiday calendar. You're, you are expected to work X amount of days, you get X amount of sick days. You're supposed to use them with discretion. There's an ethics issue. You don't call out on a Friday before a holiday. You don't cause undue harm to the school district by taking, extending your vacation based on a possible neighboring district. So when a teacher, when teachers say, or, or the argument is that teachers are going to call out, I, as a former teacher, I would never call out the day before a holiday. And anyone here that has taught probably feels the same way.
I, I mean, it may be better in, in this conversation, and I think the concern from the, is the number of students who'd be out and the lost productivity there as opposed to getting into, I, I respect what you're saying. I just don't want to be party to a conversation that may be questioning the integrity of our teachers.
I would agree with that.
Because I, I, their integrity is, is highly defensible.
I actually don't think that our teachers are people who would call out.
Right, I.
I think there's a different issue here.
I can be very database too, because Marines looked at this. I mean, we actually, when we have attendance issues, as you would hope, it's, it's a very narrowly focused set of individuals who, for a variety of reasons, are struggling to be here. You know, the vast majority are here and doing, putting hours in. So I just would, if, if you don't mind the phrase, put some guardrails up here.
Can I just, just to clarify, I wasn't saying that logistical difficulties are big because the teachers are only out. I'm saying logistical difficulties, if, if a huge number of students are away and families are away, stu-, the teachers won't advance the subject, or they, they won't happen because, why teach something once and have it?
I don't think advancement of subject happens two days before a holiday. You know, you're not introducing a new unit on those days, right? You're probably revisiting a unit and you're going over, right? And, you know, Teresa was saying, like, a lot of teachers might put on movies, and that's a culture that we've all experienced. And when we were in school, we were like, "I hope we're watching movies, it's the day before a break." But I don't think, I don't think large-scale instruction is happening the day before a holiday or the two days in between a holiday. Um, but it's time to review, and I think that we're making an assumption that students, that parents are going to be pulling their kids. Yes, that's going to happen. That's going to happen on the tail end or the beginning of any holiday, there's kids are going to be out. Do we have data on these days that might have been on?
But what I'm, what I'm saying, I hear your point, but what I'm saying is that if you commit, when we were like, vacation-rich this year, because we have those two weeks, if you commit to these other holidays, what you're going to have to do in other years is take back days, single days or double days from weeks off that we have. And in those weeks, and tho- those days are where people are going to be away, those days are useless days. It's creating logistical, more logistical sort of cruff in the calendar. I, 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 I'm not saying you're completely wrong. I'm saying that on balance, the, the more direct approach like draft A has less, less of that cruff, less of that logistical difficulty.
It's about what, what our priorities are as a district. What are our values as a district? Is it logistical convenience or are we honoring holidays of all members of our community?
Well, I think that, and again, I accept, you know, my point of view is that our core competency, our core responsibility is to have the kids in school and educate them as much as. as much as possible. I think, you know, especially from, as a parent of, like, kids who are graduating, I think this is a much bigger topic. There is a, there's this sort of crisis with children of legit, how legitimate their school is. They see school as sort of taking up their time instead of them helping them make use of it. Use of AI to create, to finish assignments is up. Teachers use AI to grade assignments. There's a sort of lack of rigor that floats around. I see it in lots of ways in the high school, in the student body. So again, you know, I think the thing that you're mentioning has value, but it's not the core competency or responsibility of the school district. What is our core responsibility is to educate the kids as much as possible, and, you know, with as much continuity in the strongest way possible. And to the extent, and it's not just the calendar, but to the extent that the calendar helps or creates difficulties, to me, our approach has to be whatever creates the least difficulties. And that's why I support, and this is not included this year, this is something I've been saying for a couple of years, but.
I think eleven of the eight.
And that, too.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's exactly what we're going to decide here.
Yeah.
And this is obviously incredibly heated. We could probably sit here for a couple of hours because people feel really strongly about each side. I personally feel like it's a really difficult decision, really difficult. And I think where I land is on the side, at the, at great risk, is on the side of what I've heard expressed by a lot of teachers in the district who favor calendar A because their experience is that if they're in school, the twenty-second and twenty-third, and then also have Diwali, Diwali and Eid off, that ends up being four days that they lose for good teaching and instruction. They get two days where kids aren't in school, and that when you have a holiday week like that, many people pull their kids out of school, not to mention the fact that they have to be in school. I think they do come to school. They come to school. And while other people are sort of getting ready and going away to be able to be at Christmas Eve with their family, you know, but that's their own thing that they have to manage. We all have to manage those things in our life. But I think that, for me, the biggest deciding factor had to do with what I think our job is, and it has to do, and I think it's also part of Portrait of a Learner, is how do we do the best job of educating our children in curriculum and instruction area? I think there are also, I don't want any child to have to feel not seen or heard because their, their background or their religion isn't respected, but there are also other ways of having them be seen and heard. And I will also, just for my last word, will go on record for the future, that I am completely in favor, when we do this calendar thing, of considering and taking it up in the community, if that's the issue, of not having to have two days off for Rosh Hashanah. I truly believe, in the context of all this, that never gets talked about. I know people keep saying to me, oh, it's because there's so many Jewish people in the community. And I would argue with you all that many of those people, and I know I can say this here because I'm Jewish, it allows me to be able to say, let's talk about it. Many people do not observe two days. And, you know, if they do, they can choose to keep their child out, just like if you're observing Eid and it's, kids are, it's not a holiday, that's a choice that you have to make. And so I feel like, looking ahead, and this is going to, this is going to be a big issue, I do think that's worth a consideration. You don't have to just go with what's always been done anyway.
I respect that, Jody, a lot. And I respect that, and I think that part of the information you're using is qualitative data, that you don't have a good data set, right? You're using a couple of opinions of people that you have spoken to, you know, it's an emotional decision, right? We don't have the data here to really make a very informed decision, and a lot of us are making emotional decisions.
But if teachers feel like they really lose a lot in the area of.
But eleven of the eighteen other districts aren't going in that direction.
Okay.
That's almost, what is that? I don't, I can't do quick math like that. Who's good at math?
Eleven of, um.
Eleven out of eighteen? Come on, Melissa.
Hold on, we all have cell phones here.
More than half.
It's like sixty percent. It's not like, you know, ballpark.
Yeah, but it's, you know, so.
Sixty-one percent.
Sixty-one?
Do I see? And I'm a sociology major.
So if we're going to use the data, if we're going to use the data that we have, because we don't have attendance data, and we don't have, we don't have a survey of not only faculty in Hastings, but faculty across, right, all of Westchester and Putnam.
Right, because I'm only contacting.
Right? So what I'm looking at is sixty-one percent of schools are saying that we are not giving the twenty-second and the twenty-third off because they're not holidays, and they're deeming those days as instructional days. So that's how I'm looking at it. And I'm also looking at it from my own opinion of pushing equity work, which is completely under fire right now. So that'll be my last comment as well. And I think we should just vote. I think everyone has made their decision. I don't think we have to debate it.
I didn't get anybody else's any perspective.
Oh, of course, I mean, I don't want to silence anyone else.
I wasn't here at the last meeting either.
That's true.
And I did want to just, your last point, Alex, about doing it this year and what it means for next year when we have, could you just elaborate on that because I missed the.
Sure. Depends where, so it's a weird, you know, depending upon where Christmas falls, New Year's is a state holiday, so January first is always off. Sometimes they line up, but they fall like on the weekend, or like Christmas will be on the weekend and January first will be on Sunday. During those years, there's a couple of years where we only take a week off. So if you think back, like, three or four years in a row, we just took a little week off. Right now, we're in a period, it's like a full moon, where we, because of the way they fall, we end up taking two weeks off because we don't want to have an additional single day, January second, just a Friday next year, or this year last year. So anyway, when we have, right now, this year, we have, I'm sorry, planning for next year, we have one of those large periods of two weeks off. So we have kind of extra days where we could take, you know, make Christmas Eve the first day of the holiday. But if we're putting ourselves in a, in a position, we're saying that this is something we're committing to doing, the only way you're going to get those days going forward is to take them from some other holiday. And right now, we have two whole weeks off, a week in February, a week in April, which is sometimes in March, but we would have to take days from those weeks. And so to me, that's the difficulty I see, and particularly, as I think as high school parents, we know how much gets done in the back half of the year. Taking those, those weeks and chopping them up, where we're, say we're having a school day, but then nobody's, like, really nobody's going to show up. On, if we take, if we have singleton days in class, which is what, we're in a position that we're going to put ourselves in when we don't have these extra days at Christmas Day.
But we also don't have that data to look at. We're not looking at the calendars for the next three or four years to forecast that out.
Well, but you know, that's just a rotating thing. I mean, I think to your point, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
You did. I mean, it seems like, I mean, I think you were the one who originally said, let's draw the vote. I mean, I feel like, in a way, this conversation's becoming circular.
Yeah.
If we're going to disagree, we're going to disagree, and we can move forward, and that just, that's, that's the nature of it.
But Maureen, I think, to your point, I think this is what maybe you were asking, Alex, maybe I missed it, but it's like if Christmas was on a Christmas Eve and Christmas were like.
Friday and Saturday.
Sunday and Monday, I was going to say.
Like a Friday and Saturday, then you only have a week off.
And the following week was New Year's.
You have like six business days off.
You wouldn't give the whole part of the next, like if New Year's.
You don't give two weeks off.
January first was on.
When Christmas falls on a Saturday.
A Monday.
You don't get the whole week off before. But now everyone gets the week before because it's falling on a Wednesday.
Right.
Right, but how does that affect the, whether, the argument for pro or against, given Diwali and Eid? Like, that's what I want to connect with, too. It doesn't have.
Just that you'd have to take.
Because people are conflating vacation time.
I mean, functionally, you just have to take, you know, where are you getting the days from? This, in this calendar, we're considering, you can legitimately take those two days from before Christmas. And because there's enough of a break, it's not creating a crisis, let's say, socially. But in a year where there's just one week, then where are you getting those days from? You'd have to take them from the other, we only have three long holidays during the year. We have the winter break, we have the midwinter break, and we have the spring break. And so you'd have to get days from one of those three pools of days.
It really matters when Labor Day is each year.
Exactly.
When you have a Labor Day, that is the key. It's not the, and where are all the other holidays?
Yeah, and all these other holidays fall, you have to, really have to look at the calendar year by year and not just make an assumption for the year.
Yeah, well, Melissa, if I may. Melissa D. has looked down the road a couple of years, and you do have coming at you a very late Labor Day. Is that the year after next? Next, next year?
Next year's September first. And we vote on the calendar of a year, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So let's just vote on this year. Let's just vote on.
Like I said, it's like a haircut, it grows back, so.
If it's late, it passes as something.
That is there. Maybe I should be voting to start school before Labor Day.
Right.
Like other districts do.
And I know, uh, New York City schools went back on the first, right? So they went back, they didn't have it before they had it.
Right.
Yeah, I, their calendar tends to be different for a bunch of other reasons, so.
Could I, can I make a request for next year, right? I know we have to vote for this year, but for next year, is it possible to do a survey to kind of get the pulse of the community, including?
Well, we did a survey last year. My hunch is it won't vary a lot, but we could certainly do that.
Yeah, like, to your point, Jody, like, to ask about the two days, you know, it'd be interesting for both the teachers and the community would be good to have that. And the attendance data would be nice to have as a decision point, too.
I think straddling every holiday, you're going to have a Friday where parents are going to pull their kids because they got a cheaper flight. You know, like, that happens no matter, yeah, no matter what vacation is, that Friday and that Monday are going to be lower statistical.
Rest in peace, sophomores have three tasks this Friday before break.
Yeah. It's important what the teachers and staff, teachers' experience and what they've, I think that's an important variable to consider, which we could also survey, I guess.
Yeah, I would just, just one little tiny law on this fire. You know, there's some things that only happen once a week, once a schedule. So there's like a, the science lab only happens once a six-day schedule. The snow day last week kicked that lab, and now that lab that was supposed to happen last week is going to happen after February break, just to give an idea of how things go.
Alex, we could also revisit snow days. I mean, I think you're, I think you're conflating a lot of different issues. I agree with you about the academic rigor and love of schooling that we want to have.
I would love to revisit snow days.
We're also talking about, you know, two, two days, and I think you're bringing up so many other issues around curriculum and planning and expectations around teachers and students. And I just feel like it's really important that we don't conflate all of those because it makes it very confusing to have the conversation.
Fair enough. I'm just saying, it's multi, my complaint is multivariable. It's the lack of school days.
What is the voting process?
Yeah, listen.
Okay, so Melissa's going to watch us carefully. So how would we do it, then?
In favor of.
To say, schedule A.
Okay, let's see.
All in favor of.
Fine. So we'll do two votes? Okay, well, let's do, sure.
You could do each one.
Well, if the first one passes, then you don't have.